My grid is currently five by four and it might, that might be the limits of what my.
No, you can get to me.
Oh, it goes, gets bigger. Okay. Mine just got bigger. So it's fine. John Hickling joined. We have a quorum.
All right. It's seven o'clock. So I'd like to get started. Before, before I ask for motions from the Select Board and the Finance Committee to open the public hearing, I want to make just a few very brief, quick comments. Both the Finance Committee and the Select Board at the conclusion of the public hearing will continue their meeting to take positions on the warrant articles. The Select Board will actually adjourn from this meeting and start a separate meeting. The Finance Committee, on the other hand, will just continue on in, in this meeting. So at the end of the public hearing, the Select Board will be, be leaving and will be reconvening. And before we start the public hearing also, I have asked the moderator to be with us this evening, and I should see that she is here, to provide an update for us on the prospective disposition of various warrant articles and to outline for us the procedures she's going to use at town meeting. Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, a reminder that town meeting will take place on Sunday, September 13th, at one o'clock in the afternoon at the Doug White Fields located behind Concord-Carlyle High School. The rain date for the meeting is Monday, September 14th at 5:00 PM, same location. So we're doing four things to try and reduce the COVID exposure at this meeting. The first is we're holding the meeting outdoors. The second is everyone will be required to wear a mask. The third is we will observe social, physical distancing in seating and in our movements during the meeting. And the fourth is that we are streamlining the business of town meeting in order to make the meeting take less time. We'll still be working with the warrant as it was originally posted on February 5th, 2020. And I do want to note that during the last couple of months, there are numerous towns in Massachusetts that have held their annual town meetings using similar protocol to what we will be using. And there are no reports of a cluster of COVID infections resulting from any of those meetings. So that should make us all feel fairly confident in the measures that we will be observing to take care of public health. So how are we going to streamline the meeting? First of all, we'll have a robust use of the consent calendar. Right now, we're expecting to have 24 articles on the consent calendar. The consent calendar will be published in the Finance Committee report. It will be posted on the website and it will be included in the meeting materials that will be distributed at the meeting. Usually, the consent calendar is limited to routine and non-controversial matters on the warrant. But this year, we will also include some non-routine articles, but ones which are supported by the Select Board and by the Finance Committee if the article is within the purview of the Finance Committee. And articles which are also expected to receive pretty broad community support. This year, any 10 articles instead of the, 10 voters, rather, instead of the usual five, will be able to remove an article from the consent calendar for full deliberation and voting. And that additional five voter requirement is just to get a little, a slightly weightier view of the meeting that the merits of a full deliberation on a particular article are outweighed by the risk inherent in spending longer in the meeting. Five articles will be either postponed or referred back to committee. Six articles will not be moved, and that will leave us with 15 articles to take up for deliberation and voting. In order to reduce the time that we will spend on deliberation and voting, but still have a real deliberation at town meeting on the articles that we are taking up, we will have no presentations on the main motions. And voters are going to be urged and have been urged already in various missives that have come to their houses and have been posted on the website and announced in various places to please go to the website and review the materials that are available on the, and that's the town website, to review the materials that are available on the articles as well as the recordings of hearings that have been held on the articles. That will include this hearing. There'll be no video screens at the meeting because we're outdoors. That means that all the motions and narrative explanations on the articles, on the motions that we will take up for full deliberation, as well as the consent agenda items, those will be in the printed materials that will be distributed at the meeting. Now, anyone who's planning to offer an amendment to a motion under an article is urged to submit it to the moderator by September 1st so that we can include it in the meeting materials. Because we, we will not have a means to project on a screen, a, any amendment that is offered. We'll have to read the amendments if they aren't already printed in the meeting materials. So if a proposed amendment has been included in the meeting materials, then just like the motions, the main motions, there won't be a presentation on that amendment. However, there will be an opportunity for the sponsor of an article to have a two-minute response on the floor of the meeting. Any amendment that's offered on the floor during the meeting for the first time, the sponsor will be allowed three minutes to speak to the amendment. And again, the article proponent will have the opportunity to address the amendment for, for two minutes. We're still working on exactly what the mechanism will be for communicating a proposed amendment on the floor of the meeting. Normally, we require them in meeting, in writing, and it is my hope that rather than physically handling pieces of paper, we will be able to have a setup where proposed amendments can be texted or emailed. But we'll be testing on September 8th what our Wi-Fi capability is up in the field and then we'll know for sure what our procedure can be. Comments and questions from the floor will be limited to one minute. And article sponsors will be asked by the moderator to come to a podium and as appropriate respond to questions or respond to comments that have been made on the motions. Voting, as is usually the case, will be by raised brightly colored voting slip. Right now, we are not expecting to have electronic voting for any counted vote. There's a variety of reasons why not. It's complicated this year. And we're still working out exactly what the procedure will be for counting vote if we need to do that or for taking a vote by paper ballot if we need to do that. And our goal is to complete this meeting in a single session and to do it as expeditiously and yet with proper deliberation as we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carmen. Let me, before we begin, just explain how this public hearing is going to work. So we have four articles that we're going to hear this evening. Article 10, the Town Budget. Article 11, capital improvements. Article 16, the Approval of the Tax and Centry Finance Agreement. And Article 23, the BD Swim and Fitness Center Enterprise Fund. We will, at the end of the presentations that are made on each of these articles, I will then call on members of the Finance Committee and the Select Board for any comments or questions they will have. All you need to do for that is if you can, because I think I can see you all, just raise your hand. If somehow I'm not calling on you or your hand is up and I haven't called on somebody else, just yell at me. Once we have concluded questions or comments from the Select Board and the Finance Committee, we will turn to the audience for their comments or questions. The way that is going to work is if you are on the call, you will notice down at the bottom of your screen a little icon that says Q and A, Questions and Answers. If you have a question or a comment that you would like to make on any of the articles we are considering this evening, please simply use that question and answer icon to type in, "I have a comment." Your name will show up, or "I have a question," whatever it is. And we will take those questions and comments in order. When you are called on, Jeremy or Chris, on behalf of our committees, will unmute you and turn your videos on so that we will all have the opportunity to see you as you make your comments or raise your questions. So, Tom, unmute.
In the event that one of the committee members, Select Board or FinCom, I will have some comments I wish to make as a citizen and not as a member of the FinCom. How should I arrange to get recognized for that?
I think after the Select Board and FinCom have made their comments, why don't we just for, so that it's as smooth as we can make it, why don't you indicate so at that time and we'll let you be the first audience member that gets to speak?
Perfect. Thank you.
Where we don't have to jockey back and forth. And that holds true for any of the other members of either of the two committees. If they have a question, just let us know. Write it to conclusion of the presentations and we'll call on you first so we can move on smoothly. All right. Are there any other questions or comments that the Board or the Committee wishes to make before we begin? Seeing none, the first article we're going to consider this evening is Article 10, the Town Budget.
Do we need, excuse me, Mike, do we formally open the public hearing?
Yes, we do. We'll do the Select Board first. Could I have a motion, Lynda? Thanks, Dean.
I'm moved to open the public hearing.
For a second.
Second.
Second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Pachus?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. I note it passes unanimously. Mr. Banfield?
Okay. Can I have a motion for the Finance Committee to also open the public hearing? Tom Tarpe, we have a, we have a mo, do we have a motion? And a second?
Second.
See, we have a second. I'll call the roll. I, Dean Banfield, aye. Ms. Ortner?
Yes.
Mr. Tarpe?
Aye.
Mr. Guariello?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman? Mary, you're muted.
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Hickling?
Aye.
Mr. Patel?
Aye.
Mr. Jamison?
Yes.
Ms. Zoll?
You did.
Mr. Swain?
Yes.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Okay, I think we're, we're good. It passes unanimously. So we're open.
Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. A call on the Town Manager and Chief Financial Officer presents the Town Budget.
Hi. Good evening, members of the Board and the Finance Committee. Good to see you all again. Carrie and I will be kind of co-presenting this and really it's the FY '21 Proposed Town Budget, Take Two. When we presented this information back, just back in like February, maybe early March, it seemed like it was a whole lifetime ago, but here we are today in August with the effects of the pandemic still becoming unknown to us. But we can, we think, report with some level of confidence on the effects of the pandemic on our town budget. And that is what is our goal to present here tonight. So I don't know if you want to, if you guys want to share the screen or if you all have the presentations in front of you.
Chris should have the presentation to share.
Okay, I'm loading it up. Give me a second. Thanks, Carrie.
Okay, sure.
So before I get started, I, and I know I, it goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway, that the work of the Finance Department, but also all of the town departments on the original budget, I thought it was very good. We were able to submit a budget, admit the Finance Committee's guidelines. And in the meantime, here in, in the midst of COVID-19, we are all able to work together to make adjustments that we think will maintain our services and our operational needs, but while making some thoughtful reductions in key areas. And, you know, like I said, I think it's a credit to both the Finance Department and Carrie specifically, but also generally town departments and their ability to, and, and I guess I would extend that to Concord Public Schools and the Concord-Carlyle Regional School District. Everyone really has been at the table, really looking for ways to solve problems, understanding the moment we're in. And I think the results that we're presenting and that I think the schools will present are a reflection of us taking not only the moment we're in very seriously, but also the, the feedback we get from the community about this moment very seriously. So, Chris, I don't know if you're. Okay. So I don't have to read all of this, do I? So, okay, so let's get right to slide two then. So just to restate, the original budget was a Finance Committee guideline, 2.5% increase to general funds. And the big story in this slide is your revised budget reflecting assumed revenue reductions and to some extent expenditure reductions is a 2.35% reduction to FY '21. So I want to make sure it's clear. It's, it's not 2.3% less than what we were proposing in February. It's 2.3% less than the last fiscal year. So this presentation does not get into the level of detail that the reducing the, or rebalancing the budget presentation that was presented to both the Select Board and the Finance Committee gets into. So that is on the Finance Committee's Meetings page. So if people have, want to see that level of detail, I would refer you to there. We can also load it on to the Town Meeting page for this article as well. But all of you have seen that those details and so we don't, the, the Town Meeting presentation, we didn't fill with the space for that level of detail. But the big story here is the reduction compared to FY '20. So in the highlights, you know, we talked about the new budget book format. Hopefully, I mean, hopefully people have a chance to get their hands on either a printed copy or PDF copy. It's really, it's a, it's a great looking book. Really, I think presents all, presents all the same information, but in a, I think, an approachable way. We also consolidated the budget line items going from, I think, 32 to 16 or 18. And we'll, I do go through those again at the end of the presentation like I did back earlier this year. We do include, we did continue with the Fire Department Command Structural Change. I think one of the things we've learned since the pandemic has began, begun is that that need for that structural change is even more pronounced. So we did stick with that. We still stuck with our increased legal services budget and some of the things that have unfolded with regards to our legal, our legal service demands, I think underscore that need for that increased budget. And we had proposed two new positions, the dispatcher and the land manager. Since the budget was initially presented, specifically due to COVID-19, we have added two additional full-time positions, and those are two full-time custodians. As you know, the Governor has issued guidance on office space custodial care, and that has really driven up our custodial demands. And after doing, and actually Kate Hodges, who I believe is on this, is in this meeting as well, she and Ryan Orne, our Facilities Department, did a really masterful job of analyzing our custodial needs townwide. And so we decided that after looking at options for outsourcing versus insourcing, we felt we were going to get a better bang for our buck, adding two full-time custodians, which like I said, is, it's, it's a need, it's a new need in light of the pandemic. But the costs are offset by a reduction of contractual services. So there were contracted cleaning companies whose, once these custodians come on board, their contracts will be, will be ended. So they'll be, the costs will be offset by that. And then the biggest thing is we'll have, we'll enjoy much greater flexibility and, and control over our level and, and quality of custodial care. So the other thing is, and we'll get this, and you saw the rebalancing presentation. You saw the specifics about the reduction in the salary reserve, and we eliminated funding for certain vacant positions to offset increases. The next slide. So I put in, this slide is, it was in the original presentation. We were asked at an early hearing, I think at the town meeting preview about FTEs and the growth in FTEs. So I just added the two custodians as I just presented on the, on the past slide. There's 54 driven by, since FY '15. As you can see, the light plant, Fire Department, IT combined for about 15 of those. And part of that is, as you can see below, expansion of services at the West Concord Fire Station. We've opened a broadband business. There's increased demand for services. And specifically, two of those positions I just highlighted are a result of COVID-19. And then we've got expanded roles in large part due to many new boards and committees, assuming control of public, of public access television, Media Network, and then the growth of the Facilities Division, and then emerging needs, specifically municipal archives, tourism and sustainability. So there's been a, as I mentioned a few months ago, there's been a thoughtful growth in employees that are really targeted to specific community needs. Honestly, if you look at the presentation, the last presentation, I did have the Enterprise Fund budget numbers on there, but I'll tell you that given what has occurred with the Recreation Department and the BD Center, which Kate will talk about in a bit, we didn't really have those. Not, we, we, it was harder to kind of project those numbers, I think. You know, I think they are, they are a projection and I think we wanted to make sure that we were as accurate as possible. So I left those out of the general fund presentation and we'll keep those for discussion in the Enterprise Funds.
Okay, so I'm going to go through the next several slides and talk in a little more depth about some of the changes that we've made to the, to the budget. And I think the good news here, even with what's happening with the pandemic and the concern for, for lost revenues, we've been able to make adjustments in the budget and we're still able to move forward many of the initiatives that we had hoped to move forward when we presented this budget to you the first time around. So in, in general government, as Stephen mentioned, we have consolidated our Facilities Division. Our Facilities Division is, is a division that has been growing over the last several years as we have taken on maintenance of additional buildings and, and brought the amount of work up to a level where we've had to analyze, did it make sense to be contracting these services or did we have enough of this work to bring specialists in-house? And so over the last several years, we have grown our Facilities Department. But what we've also been able to do is pull out pieces of facilities maintenance in individual budgets and bring them under one manager, the Facilities Director. And in doing so, we've identified at least $10,000 worth of savings in Fiscal '21. And this is going to be something that we continue to look at and would hope that we would be able to find additional savings going forward. Stephen had mentioned the increase in legal services. We've added $94,000 to legal services and hope that that will be sufficient to cover legal expenses for Fiscal '21. We have added about $24,000 in total to our Visitor Center Economic Vitality Division. So this notion of, of having a staff member handle economic vitality issues, working with the business community, that's new in the budget this year. This is an, an added responsibility for one of our staff members who has a lot of experience in this area. You may recall, at least for the last couple of years, we've been trying to set aside some money within the budget for economic development activities. We're able to do that in, in '21 and what a perfect time with everything that's going on. It really couldn't be happening at a better time. In the Finance Department, this really is a realignment. We have a, the Concord Retirement System, which really is an independent entity, separate and distinct from the Town of Concord. And we are in the process really of separating the two entities. In last year and years before, all of the, the funding for the staff at the retirement system actually flowed through the Town's General Fund and was offset 100% by a billing to the retirement system. We've taken that out as we move down the road towards separating these two entities. In Planning and Land Management, we have a new position, a land manager position. This person will be primarily charged with overseeing the vast conservation lands that the Town of Concord owns. This individual will also be responsible for inspections that are required under the Tree Preservation Bylaw. And these inspections were previously done through our Inspections Division. That work and the funding, the, the fees that are levied under the Tree Preservation Bylaw will help offset the land manager position. So the, the position itself is a $72,000 position, but there are $36,000 worth of fees that are estimated to offset that, that new position. Next slide. So then in Public Safety, Stephen also mentioned the change in the command structure at the Fire Department. The net cost here is $44,000, and this entails promoting four current firefighters to the rank of lieutenant. And this will allow the fire chief to have a lieutenant stationed at, at each of the stations. So one at Walden Street, one in West Concord. And then the captain, who is the most senior officer on duty, is able to be the duty or the shift commander. Previously, the captain was housed out of Walden Street and that individual, individual, individual would serve as the entire shift commander, but also the commander for the, for the operation at Walden Street. And it particularly when there was an incident running, that person was wearing two hats and it was very difficult. So this change, a minor, a fairly incidental increase in expenditure provides a huge operational advantage at the Fire Department.
One of the, sorry, Carrie, just one of the, one of the things that I, as I mentioned, is even more enforced is due to the pan, due to the fire, the COVID-19, you know, the contagiousness of it, the Fire Department has not been commingling shifts by and large. So the people who work in West Concord work in West Concord, the people who work on Walden Street work on Walden Street. In the past, people could fill shifts and do overtime and things like that. And the chief assessed early on that to make sure that if one person in one station was affected, you could minimize the spread, he stopped allowing people to commingle shifts. And that has continued and I expect that to continue into the future until there's, until the virus is no longer present. And so this, when I said the structure is even more important now due to COVID-19, that's the reason. Sorry, Carrie.
No, that's okay. And so then another change at the, the Fire Department is adding a second dispatcher on the overnight shifts so that we have two personnel on in dispatch at all times. Over, over the years, the, the complexity of, of the calls that the dispatchers have to manage and the, the work that they have to do as a result of the, the Emergency Medical Dispatch, which is a couple of years old now, it, it really places a huge burden on the dispatchers that are, that are working. And so this would allow them to, to have two on staff at all times. We also have a planned reduction in, in the support from the Emergency Services Stabilization Fund. We certainly talked about this a lot last year and as we put this budget together. But when we added A3, the ambulance at West Concord, we had a flooding plan where we were going to use money set aside in the Emergency Services Stabilization Fund over a period of four years to, to. over a period of four years to, to, um, phase in the full impact to the general fund. Um, so we did, we do have a planned reduction of $124,000 that we had to absorb in the general fund budget this year. All of that is offset by a total department-wide attrition savings of about $277,000. So we've had a lot of turnover due to retirement in public safety and in the fire department specifically that helps us offset these costs in this year. But obviously, um, the attrition savings is going to diminish over a period of years and, and we'll have to address that going forward. In public works, uh, we are looking to replace the fuel depot. We have $20,000 in the budget that it, that will be combined with some funding from prior years to be able to replace that fuel depot. Um, also, uh, here I, I note a decrease in cost of street lighting due to efficient fixtures, $12,000. We've actually increased that to $17,500 based on a, a further analysis after we closed the fiscal '20 budget. In human services, uh, we do have some attrition savings at the library estimated at about $32,000. And then in social services, uh, we're, we're looking to make some adjustments in our grid structure, particularly for, um, the social workers. We've, we've found, and, and this is something that we've noted over a period of years, we've had a very difficult time hiring people into those, those very critical positions because of the low salary that we've offered. So we did agree to implement a market adjustment in fiscal '21 and, and boy, those people, those staff members are really earning every penny through this pandemic. It's been a difficult time, so we're, we're thankful that we're able to make the adjustment this year. Next slide, please. So then we've, we've also mentioned the salary reserve account. We originally had budgeted at $500,000. That has been reduced to $250,000 as, um, a way to help close the gap that is expected because of, of revenue reductions. And this, we feel, we feel comfortable with this. Um, it will allow the town manager to provide adjustments that are in line with what we're seeing other communities giving during this difficult time. Um, also the capital outlay and, and debt, we've moved that into one warrant article. Uh, we've reduced that total by $705,000. Uh, we'll talk about that more under Article 11. But the main reason that we've, we've moved capital outlay into the debt article, so we have one comprehensive capital improvement plan article, really is so there's no question about the life or the longevity of any of these capital appropriations. We don't want them tied to a budget article that closes at June 30 because there are often many valid reasons why an unauthorized and appropriated capital outlay expense doesn't occur in the same budget year. Um, so we, we are moving everything to put it into one capital article so that, that it survives as long as there is funding available in that article. In total, across all of our departments, we have in excess of $350,000 in attrition savings. We've noted, um, at, at least at the time we put this together, uh, we, we've had a lot of turnover, seven firefighters, 14 police officers, a new town manager, a new special collections curator, um, and, and some additional positions have turned over since. We note that the attrition savings will not continue, obviously, as employees advance through the compensation scale and, and that some of these savings will be offset by increased training costs. But we are seeing quite a bit of savings in fiscal '21 that will last for a couple of years before people start moving up in the scales. And then next slide, please. So this is a summary of all of the transfers and credits that are added to the general fund budget. And these are transfers and credits that come from funds other than the general fund, most notably the enterprise funds. So the, the enterprise funds receive a variety of services from general fund departments. We've talked about this before. They receive payroll services and banking services and, uh, recruitment and benefit services from human resources. So we assign a fee, just as if they were an, an independent entity, and we charge them for the cost of those services. And we bring that revenue into the general fund. It is a revenue source that is used to support the general fund appropriation. And in total, these transfers and credits are about $2.8 million. And I note that we typically have a, uh, a transfer from recreation and BD to support these services. But because of the impact of COVID-19 on their operations in fiscal '21, we have eliminated those transfers. So for recreation, it's $205,000 and, and for BD, $83,000 that we had originally included as a, a revenue offset to the general fund that we have since removed and had to make adjustments in the budget to account for that reduction in revenue. Next slide, please. So this is, is just a summary and really the, the top half of, of this graph is, is what we're talking about, the town government. Uh, the general fund portion of the appropriation is $25,211,000. It is $87,000 or 0.35% lower than what we presented to you back in February or March. The transfers are also lower by 587,000 or 17%, most notably because of the, uh, the adjustments from recreation and BD, leaving the total appropriation at $28,31,663, which is 600, about $675,000 lower than the original fiscal '21 presentation or 2.35%. Um, and then we've, we've also included for, um, the K-8 system, the high school guidelines as a total, um, is up 1.1 million over the original fiscal '21. Non-guidelines is up about 600,000. So the budget in total or total spending for fiscal '21 is up about 1.7% at 1.7 million or about one and a half percent, uh, which is about half of where it was when it was originally presented. Next slide. Stephen.
So, yeah, yeah. So I had trouble getting the mute button. Um, so just to, to show where allocations of each dollar raised goes, um, about a quarter, 24 cents goes to town government. Um, 35 cents goes to Concord Public Schools, 18 to the regional school district. So, um, combined, those public schools are, um, you know, more than 50 cents, uh, appropriately so. And I think in, in, in common for most municipalities, the schools are, uh, the majority of the budget. And then you can see we've got other kind of fixed expenses like group health insurance, um, which we did a lot of, uh, Carrie Lefler and, uh, HR Director Amy Foley did a significant amount of work on trying to tweak our plan designs and incentivize, uh, reduced enrollment and higher cost plans. And that's in that rebalancing presentation that you saw, that each of you have seen. Uh, we did achieve some savings for FY '21 through that process. It's a, a little thing that doesn't often get noticed in the big picture, but as you can see, when it's 6% of your budget, changes in that can make a big difference. And then you've got other post-deployment benefits, which is basically retiree health, retirement, um, which is our pension system. You've got debt, uh, which is excludable debt. And then you've got all other kind of miscellaneous things at about three cents. So, um, for what it's worth, this looks like a relatively normal, um, alignment of, of expenditure, uh, allocation for a municipality. I think it shows that Concord is a, it has balanced its expenses, uh, very, very well. Next slide. And so, and actually, Chris, we can just fly through these. I just want to, um, show basically the roadmap of the consolidation. And you all saw this before us, so don't need to dwell on it. It hasn't changed, only the numbers have changed. Um, but it really just, if someone says, you know, where are the line ends going? They can follow this roadmap and see where we consolidated. And, and the consolidation helps with flexibility. I also think it helps with, um, approachability of the budget information. So Chris, I think we can just kind of go through these quickly. You can see, um, that some of these things change around a little bit. So, um, that's the presentation. Again, I'd like to thank Carrie for, um, all the work she's put into this and, uh, open her for questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Stephen and Carrie. So let me turn now to the committees and ask from the finance committee or the select board if there are questions that you want to ask, just raise your hand and I'll call on you. So is that your hand?
Yes. Uh, it's about the legal budget. You said that it was going up by about $94,000 from last year. And so what does that put us? And is that going to be enough, including all the, uh, recent litigation, like the injunction and so on?
Um, I think that puts us up at about 340,000.
Yeah, I think it's probably 320.
And as, you know, we, we believe that with the, um, with the process specifically on Esther Brook, that, um, we do think that we will be able to, we're at a place where that should cover it.
Thank you. Other, uh, Mary.
Uh, I have a quick question about the incremental headcount that you have. Um, you mentioned that you're hiring two new custodial positions and you're going to offset that by eliminating some contractual services, right? Is that temporary in response to some of the work that you need to do for COVID? Or is this, are these expected to be permanent?
They'll be permanent positions. Um, they're driven right now, um, by requirements for COVID-19. Um, but in the analysis, it showed that in-sourcing now will, um, so if you, if you remember, we consolidated building expense line items, uh, when I presented the budget back in, in February. Um, and we talked, I had think, I had said at the time, there is really a need to consolidate custodial services, but because it was so complicated and every building had a different plan, it was kind of a challenge. Um, fast forward to now, we, we had a situation that was really an emergency situation that required us to, to basically come up with a new plan, kind of, uh, in real time. And so we were able to do that consolidation, which is going to include the two new positions, but also we will continue with some of our contracted cleaners. Um, but there were other, um, there were other services that we, we, we knew we weren't going to be able to renew with for certain buildings. And, you know, two custodians, I think, I'll be honest with you, we, we did take a, what's the fewest number of new people that we can, that we think we can adequately protect our employees and residents with our custodial services? So, um, you know, like I said, the, I think, you know, based on the money we spend on custodial contracts, and, and I'll say this, in terms of a general fund, um, you know, line or department budget, I believe that the, it'll probably wash out. In terms of the fully loaded cost, I'm not sure. Uh, I think we have to, there's, there's some figuring out that we need to do there. But we, like I said, uh, we did the analysis of in-sourcing versus outsourcing. And given both our experience with contracted custodial services and the new demands that are, that are placed upon us by the state's orders, uh, this was really the most sensible way to do it and the most cost-effective way.
Okay.
Actually, um, my sources tell me that it is, it is a wash. I don't know, Kate, if you want to go through that.
No, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Dean?
I just, I, I have a couple of questions, but let's follow up on that for just a second. Um, so you're, you have increased needs to keep the buildings at the right level of cleanliness. And one of the responses to that is to add, cause permanent custodians. Uh, does that mean that we're keeping on a certain number of contract services as well? But when the COVID demand for that extra level of cleanliness tails off, we can tail out of those contractors? I'm just trying to understand how you're managing the, the out year or two when, you know, we're going to not need quite such a high level of, of cleaning.
Well, so I'll give you the overarching theme, then I'm going to turn it over to Kate because she really spearheaded, she and Ryan are really spearheading this analysis. But the, the bottom line is there were existing contracts that we're paying for every year that will not be renewed. And so those contract expenses go off the table and the cost of the new students come on. But I don't know, Kate, if you want to give more detail on that.
I, I don't think I need, I don't, it's okay.
No, it's, it's, Dean, it's a great question. You married the same question. Not.
Well, so, um, we paid, uh, approximately $135,000 to $155,000 for cleaning, um, average over the past three years. Um, the difference sometimes depends on snow removal, et cetera. And so, um, the cleaning contracts that we plan on keeping are really only relative to some of the more specialty cleaning, including the, um, jail cells, frankly, and, um, some of the high-risk areas and other things that we have to do, um, relative to the visitor center. And so if we bring in, um, two staff members, um, at the rate that the custodial and maintenance custodial positions are, plus adding 20% for benefits, we're looking at about a hundred thousand dollar expense. So, um, we're projecting, uh, keeping somewhere between 20 and $30,000. And so those numbers actually end up being budget neutral.
And just, I'm sure all of you have read it, but it, it goes from daily cleanings, um, of like public bathrooms and things like that to twice or sometimes more daily cleanings and depending on the situation, plus a, um, keep creating and tracking the log of those cleanings, plus frequent trips around all municipal buildings, wiping down high-touch surfaces and things like that. And I, I'm going to give our, our, our workforce credit. A big part of this component is also town employees, um, wiping down surfaces after they've used them. For example, I was in the office, I use the coffee machine, I wiped it down with, uh, sanitizer. So I think it's, if you're not familiar with the guidance for office space, it is lengthy and specific and really, if, if you have commercial, if you run an office, you know what I'm talking about. So, um, the two employees offset by a reduction in contracts, like I said, we think presents a great value, great value for the town while, um, keeping our workplaces safe.
Thank you. Are there any?
I have two more, I have two more very simple questions. Um, do we feel like the, the budget book will be re, redone in a P, at least in a PDF way that has these real numbers in it? It doesn't, I'm not even requiring or asking for it to be done by town meeting, but for the permanent record, I think that if these are the budgets that get adopted, that budget book needs to be done. I just, can you give me an update on that?
Um, I, I don't, I'll let Carrie think, but I mean, the answer is yes. We'll have a minimally, what's going to be on the website and final forum that we'll submit to, uh, the GFOA will be, will have the accurate numbers.
Thank you.
And, and I, and sorry, and I, I'm willing to look into getting a limited edition reprint, but we just have to see what the budget looks like and if that's worth the cost.
No, I'm not even, I'm not even contemplating that, honestly. Um, so my, my final question has to do with the way transfers are managed. So Carrie, your, your presentation shows that the BD and the rec department are unable to provide the revenue source to the, to the town. Can, can we actually realize those, those savings in the, in terms of either staff reductions or, or cert? I don't know how we would actually realize expense reductions, even though they can't pay. Uh, that's, that's where I'm not, it's not clear to me. It's just a number, but it, it's, it's an offset number. And it's not clear to me that we can offset the expenses, even though we know that they're unable to provide the transferred dollars.
I mean, I'll, if I can initially, Dean?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's, it's really an ability to pay thing. And the lack of revenue, um, to meet expenses and fund transfers for rec programs and BD programs is a result of, um, state order shutdowns. So then, I, I, I know you know this, I'm just, just for, for in general. Um, so it's really ability to pay, um, the revenue isn't there. There are expenses and, and I'll turn it over to Kate and Carrie. I don't know that we, I don't know that we've actually quantified this. Um, but there is, there is somewhat of a reduction in, in expense in terms of all the services we provide for HR and things like that, but it's not 100%. Uh, I can tell you that, you know, we're still, the general, in terms of services, if you want to look at it this way, the, the services funded by the general fund will continue to prove. the services funded by the general fund will continue to provide support to recreation and BD. In what amount? I don't, I'll defer to Carrie and Kate, but I don't think we have that number yet.
To, to just follow up, the, the budget slide that was presented, which was the very gross, like six line slide, showed that the expenses were being reduced by the amount that the BD and those transfers could not deliver into the town. Now, that's the expenses being reduced. And it's just not clear to me that we have a capacity to really draw down the expenses that in a one to one manner in that way. That's all. It's just the way that was presented is that here is the expense line. It, the transfers are now reduced by the amount that the BD can't, can't deliver and, and the rec.
I think if you wait and, and just hear that article, which is last on the agenda tonight, it might paint a better picture because we were able to quantify it not at a one to one by any means, but certainly in, in a way that I think shows decreasing revenues and expenses. But there are other factors that are more static, including just maintenance of the building, water, electricity. So I think that might be helpful if we go through that.
Okay, all right. Oh, I'll hold my, that's fine.
All right, thank you. Dee, I see your.
Dee has her hand up.
I see Dee.
Thank you. I have one question. Carrie, this would be for you. When you were talking about the land management, the new position for the land management person, you said that $36,000 is coming, is for his, for that person's salary is coming from fees. Can you tell me what, what's the source of those fees? And will it, is it recurring annually?
It, it is recurring and the source of the fees are the fees that are charged under the tree preservation by law. So there are inspection fees and, you know, in similar fees. And so the tree preservation by law is already in place. We've been collecting those, those fees for, for a year or two. I can't remember if, if it's two years. So it is a recurring source.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the Finance Committee or the Select Board? I don't see any hands. I see a hand now. Linda.
Thank you for all the work that's been done on this. I'm not sure we can answer this question, but the original CARES Act provided for reimbursement for expenses that had not previously been budgeted from March to December. And what I'm wondering is, I assume then, I'm wondering how that intersects with the budget for FY21 with additional COVID expenses that I assume, or it sounds like have been built in to that budget.
So I think generally, Linda, and that is a great question. In fact, we, we did a little bit of that in our other presentation. But the reality is like, because we know we're going to need custodial care. And when, when I say it's like they were, you know, and I don't want to mention contractors by name for obvious reason, but, you know, the buildings on Kaiser Road had contracted services. And so now they're going to be done by Concord employees. That's going to need to continue into the future. And because it's revenue, because it's budget neutral and we feel we're going to have, we're going to get a better level of service, we don't, I would not submit that for CARES Act because that would just be taking an ongoing recurring cost to be offset by one time CARES Act money. However, if we hire them and they start before December 31st and they incur overtime, the overtime they incur would be submitted for CARES Act funding. Similarly, additional supplies, things like that, those are all CARES Act funding. One of the things we're looking at for CARES Act reimbursement is technology resources that are driven by telework. That would maybe be something that we would maybe purchase over time through the IT budget. But we'll be able to use CARES Act money to reimburse that because telework, like as I think I said last meeting, telework, we believe is going to be, continue to be a part of our work, our work environment for months anyway. And so those are the types of things that CARES Act, and you know, the, the not co-mingling of shifts at the fire department has increased overtime because of that structure relatively modestly, but there has been an increase that gets submitted for CARES Act. So it's, it is very specific in what you can put in. And we cannot offset, as you heard me say, you can't offset lost revenue for that, with that. I don't know if I gave a specific enough answer or a general enough answer to that.
Well, thank you for that. I, I, my concern was that we may, that we don't lose the opportunity to tap that by having built into the budget for FY21 expenses to cover COVID related activities. But it's, in general, I, I hear the line of demarcation you're making.
Right, thank you. Linda, again, are there any additional questions from the board or the Finance Committee? I don't see any, so I will turn to the audience. As I said before, if you have a question or you have a comment, would you please use the Q and A function below to let me know about it? I do not see any open questions. I'll wait another second or two. All right, I don't see any. So we will now move to Article 11, the capital improvement and debt plan. And I, is Ms. Hodges going to do that?
Yeah, Kate will take the lead on this and I will chime in when necessary.
Great. Chris, do you need a second to pull that up?
I'll pull it up now.
Okay. Sorry, is it on the screen?
All right, I got it.
I know. There we go.
Great, thank you. So this evening, similar to the general fund budget that was just presented, we've created an abbreviated version of February's larger presentation for you all and the updated version presented at the Finance Committee some weeks back. Because many of the acquisitions and the projects remain relatively unchanged, there didn't seem to be a need to go through all of them in as much detail. Again, however, if there are specific questions relative to any certain project, I do have some supplemental slides on my computer that I can go to and share in an effort to answer any of the project related questions. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the motion is changed initially since proposed and now seeks a sum of $1,081,855 in cash capital for what we refer to as capital outlay. And it reduces the debt capital request by about 1.5 million. Can I? Nope, you have to do it, Chris, sorry. So here you can see a summary of the adjustments need to the capital outlay plan. So capital outlay is a designation that we use to define projects which are funded within the levy via the general fund. And we also refer to these projects as cash capital or the non-borrowing. So this revised submission is in recognition of the impact that pandemic has had on the community and the town's overall budget projections and the individual department's capacity for projects, given that we won't even be able to undertake any of these until October of this year, after our rescheduled town meeting. So overall, the fiscal year capital outlay was decreased by about $705,000, as you can see here. Next slide. On the table, you can see the updated debt plan. The borrowing projects presented at the hearing in February totaled $5,250,000. In that presentation, we actually included the $900,000 for school projects. But since the school committee has been sharing their updated budgets and their line, their line items were removed from this particular update. So backing their requests out, the municipal capital project for borrowing authorization for pre-COVID totaled 4.35 million. As you can see in the red columns, many of the projects have been altered and the requested funding subsequently decreased. So the revised request for fiscal year 21 is now $2,825, a decrease of approximately 1.5 million. Next, please. This project, which is the Emerson Playground Improvement, remains for fiscal year 21 as the new playground safety surfacing is required by the Architectural Access Board. This project is $200,000. We had until July 1st of this year to have that done before that went into place. And the legislature has changed it to July 1st of next year, although it is still going to have to be using this year's fiscal year money because we wouldn't have the appropriation ready if we had it at next year's town meeting. Next slide, please. The Rido project calls for bathroom reconfiguration and has actually been put on hold for a year. So this amount was actually captured and moved to the fiscal year 22 request in the amount of $195,000. Next. This is the Warner Pond dredging project and that will remain for the fiscal year 21. This is actually a multi-year project with funding proposed within the town's capital plan this year and in fiscal year 22. The total borrowed amount needed for dredging these two areas that you can see within the red circles equates to about $2 million. So $500,000 will remain for fiscal year 21 and 1.5 million slated for fiscal 22. It's important to note that if the strategic dredging is not completed, boating and other passive recreational activities will be impacted. Sorry, the train is going by and it's quite loud. Can't even put down the window. Okay, next slide, please. The $600,000 request for White Pond improvements remains and relates to accessibility improvements and stormwater management within the White Pond beach area. This is an updated artistic aerial design of what we are planning. However, we have just begun the process of going through some of the initial permitting. So this is in its very infancy, infancy stages. We're starting with stormwater management and hope to have that plan to the NRC sometime in late October. This project was slated to run at the same time concurrently with the Jurell project and actually has been delayed a year. Next slide, please. Ladder one is the 2012 Emergency 1110 foot aerial ladder truck and its refurbishment has been pushed out to fiscal year 22, which is actually their 10 year life expectancy mark. So it remains on a fine schedule. That amount pushed out to 2022 is 250,000. And the $275,000 appropriation for ambulance number one that you see here will remain at that level for this year as that is reaching its 10 year life. Next, please. And lastly, the 2020 and 2021 roads program will continue to address the need to bring the average pavement condition index of the town's 107 mile network up, and this amount will be used in conjunction with approximately $670,000 in Chapter 90 state funds. Initially, we requested 1.73 million, but it has been updated to 1.25 million in recognition of the missed paving season that happened the majority of this summer. That is the abridged version of the capital plan and I'm happy to answer any questions. And.
Thank you very much, Kate. If you have a question for Ms. Hodges, please raise your hand. John?
Hey, quick question on the ambulance replacement cost. I think it was 275,000. Does the old ambulance have any residual value? Is that a net number or is that a gross number?
I believe that's a gross number. And I don't know that we, okay, and all the ambulances I've been a part of replacing, they don't really do trade-ins, they don't really have a lot of value after, afterwards. So you have to, and it has to remain in service until you get the new one. So I think we will, I think we will probably try and dispose of it, but there's not like a trade in value. It's not how, it's not how those deals typically work.
Okay, thank you.
Well, just, sorry, for this one, what actually happens is, is that they, they use this as the backup ambulance. So what happens is, is that every 10 years they, they do the new one. And then this backup ambulance moves to the backup either for mutual aid or if, in fact, we had something catastrophic where we needed an extra one or if the new ambulance needs to go in for servicing. And then what happens is the old one, which is now going to be upwards of 20 years old, either goes to training or goes for scrap. And we get very minimal, but sometimes a few thousand that then gets put into the training budget.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dee?
Thank you. Kate, this question is about the White Pond project. And what I'm wondering is, I believe it was maybe at last week's Select Board meeting, there were a group of women who got up to talk about the White Pond, maybe they are the White Pond Committee people, about the problems at White Pond. And I was wondering if you could help me better understand the problems that they were talking about, how your, your plan for the spending of the $600,000 addresses those issues?
Sure. So, Chris, would you mind going back to the map? Because I feel like it might be helpful.
Is this the, I'm sorry.
Yep, you were right on it.
Yeah.
There you go. So right now, this is sort of what we're proposing. And what you don't see here is the way that the existing conditions are now is that you drive into the small driveway from Plainfield Road and you take a very sharp corner and you go down into where the parking lot is. And in the middle that, in this drawing that you see here, there is a bio retention pond, which is essentially, you know, a place that was supposed to collect stormwater management. Unfortunately, the road doesn't actually pitch that way. So what has happened is that over time, all kinds of undergrowth and whatnot has, has grown up there. And so it's actually doing the opposite, which means that any rainwater that does hit it just runs off and down the hill. What also isn't super evident from this picture is that it's about a 58 foot drop from the top of where the parking lot is into the beach area. And so if you're talking about rainwater or anything else, snow, anything of that nature, that's a pretty fast pace that it's coming down. So the debate, and I am not a farmer by any means, but the debate is, is saying that runoff, both from the roadway in the pretreatment area and also there is an allegation that any type of fertilizer and other things used in the crop fields that are located on the left-hand side or up at the north part here, that including, you know, just regular stormwater and drainage are kind of coming down. And basically it's creating a funnel right down the driveway into the pond. There's evidence of certainly that being the pathway that the water wants to run just from the beach washout. And so what we're proposing is this series of sort of switchback left to right ADA accessible pathways, which then would have retaining walls and stormwater detention basins with native plantings that will be able to control both erosion of that and soak up some of the water. And then at the bottom where you can see, I don't know, Chris, could you just point to the bottom where that brown structure is? Okay, now go left a little. Yeah, that's great. And then go left a little and circle that other part right there, circle that circle. So right now, there's an existing stormwater catch basin that's there that's really undersized and also hasn't been effectively managed or cleaned out. And so what we're looking to do is to be able to develop another series of catch basins that run alongside, not on the NRC side, but the beach side down, collect the stormwater, send it through an underground infiltration tank, which would be under that pull-off that you can see there that's asphalt, and then connect it to the stormwater management system that's existing there underneath. In addition to that, we're also including this sort of wooden decking. It serves two purposes. One, it's an impervious surface, so it can help us to collect rainwater underneath it. And the other is that it provides ADA access to the water's edge. And so while I don't have the measurements, I believe that the, what you will see is the cumulative effect of all of these different areas will reduce the amount of runoff that we're getting into the pond.
It will reduce it, but not eliminate it, is that correct?
Certainly, you can't eliminate rainwater running into the pond ever, particularly because it also falls into the pond when it comes down from the clouds. So we're looking to reduce it by at least 60%, although we suspect it'll be closer to the 75%.
Okay, and then also they. Okay. And then also they were talking about working with the state because of the state, the problem associated with the ramp. And I wonder if that's being addressed with part of the $600,000 or in conjunction with the state?
So I just want to be clear, the $600,000 is just one part. This entire project is going to be probably in the area of 1.4, 1.5, which is why I said it was pushed out a year because we're going to be requesting additional funds next, next year. So there's no way to get this amount of stormwater management and ADA accessibility done for 600,000. Our thought is that we would get the initial part done, but not have the full walkway or the, you know, leaching area that's down at the bottom for about 850,000, which is this 600 plus the amount that is being asked for and recommended from CPC. As far as the boat ramp or the ramp that you're talking, the state owns that and we have a licensing and use and maintenance agreement with them. But it doesn't give us the ability necessarily to take it on forever. So we have a 99-year lease agreement. They would be happily approve any plan that we give them that makes it better, but they make no financial commitment to help us do that, nor will they relinquish the control of it because as a great pond, they need to retain access for fisherman.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Mary?
I have a follow-on question. I'm glad you're talking about White Pond. So the $600,000 that we have this year, you're saying, Kate, would not accomplish all that you need for the stormwater management and the ADA compliance. This year, there's nothing in the CPC article for White Pond. And it looks like you've got some money from prior years, so.
Yes, 250.
Well, yeah, and then I think last year you got 600,000 from the, this municipal debt plan as well. So if we approve this year 600,000, you'll have raised 1.6 million from various sources. So will that be enough money to get this work done?
So I think if you recall, we've altered that plan in that the 600 was for park improvements and we had split it when both of those projects were going to happen simultaneously.
And now you've transferred that to Jarrow?
That's correct.
Got it.
We have 600 and we took, what you will see is that the, the debt plan that we asked and presented back in February had an additional six for both Jarrow and for White. And so now this updated one has Jarrow zeroed out and it has the other six or five for White pushed out one fiscal year.
Well, I think also what happened was is that last year, in FY '20, we thought we were going to have 600 for Jarrow and 600 for White Pond. And we've taken all that and put it into Jarrow.
Correct. Yep.
Okay. So you've got, so then you've got 250 from CPC last year and 600,000 this year, hopefully, if this gets approved. So that's 850. Is that enough?
It's enough for the stormwater management, which we've understood to be the highest and something that the community wants the most. It will be able to handle two-thirds of the ADA walkway, but it won't have any of the amenities and it won't have the bottom half of the walkway that's able to get down. But there'll be, there'll be a series of temporary ramps that we will construct to be able to have that, but it won't pass for longer than a year. So we are going to need to come back for an additional either somewhere between 400,000 and 600,000 dollars, depending how the bids come in.
When you say amenities, do you mean, what do you mean by that?
So if you were to look back at the, I'm sorry, Chris, do you want to bring that back up? So the parking area is going to remain. That's the existing footprint, but we widened the roadway on both sides to be able to account for both emergency vehicles and traffic, to someone to be able to park and pull off. And then as a condition of the gift, the White Pond Associates, we're looking for an overlook that was going to have a plaque that was dedicated to one of their longstanding members. And so that is sort of that picnic area, picnic grove part that you see immediately. Yep, below the, the parking area. And then we also have another picnic and park area that's going to be up on, that, you know, the top area there with a trail that goes down. Certainly a blazed trail wooded, nothing, nothing super significant with some handrails that are there. New bike rack, some picnic benches, et cetera, et cetera. So that, that kind of stuff is backburner that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Are there any other questions from the Terry?
Yes, quick question about Emerson Playground. No, I'm sorry, Emerson Field. I remember a while ago it being a 1.5 million dollar project to restore that entire field. And I see it looks like it's been zeroed out. What is status of that project?
So that project is ongoing and it's being managed by the Park and Tree Crew under Aaron McClosco, who's our Highway and Ground Superintendent. And the reason that that was zeroed out this year is because they had planned on beginning that and going to bid this spring. And obviously with what's been going on, that project has been delayed. So there didn't seem to be a whole lot of sense, given that we were trying to prioritize what could, what could be done realistically. So I think that you may see a corresponding request either in FY '22 or '23 as they begin to plan for construction or at least beginning the construction in FY '21.
Okay. I'm looking at a chart that you sent me earlier that shows it's zeroed out all the way through until FY '25. And that's why I'm kind of, oh, '24, excuse me. So, so you're saying that anyway, it's been put off for this year?
Well, it hasn't been put off. They have a, they have a good amount of money that my understanding, and again, this project was in existence before I actually came to Concord, but my understanding is that the previous DPW director wanted to ask for money over a series of four or five fiscal years and then wait till he had the full amount and bid the full project. The Highway and Ground Superintendent has a different philosophy where he'd like to phase it in an, you know, most needed slash safety hazard or things that are not compliant, which would be the irrigation and, and some of the other things there, and then move ahead from there. So he'd like to make some progress with the money that they already have and then have some bids and try to see what those come in at. Because of course, we were using numbers from fiscal year 13. So they're, they're quite old now. And we also have noticed that while baseball was the main focus of that particular area, lacrosse is an up-and-coming sport. And so we're trying to figure out whether having that repointed and repitched as a baseball field makes the most sense or if we need another multipurpose or some other type of field. And I think, you know, probably when we get back to whatever the new normal is, we'll, we'll be able to better understand that.
Actually, I don't want to cut off questions, but I would, Chris, can you go back to that slide? Because I did, I did want to talk about the changes to the out years, or at least the next few years, in a little more detail. I don't know if it's going to call for the use of the telestrator, but you're using it very well tonight, Chris.
While he's, while he's looking for that, if I could just comment, I really like this new philosophy of working with the money that we already have and doing it in phases. So thank you for doing that.
Chris, that's slide four. Thank you, Terry, for saying that. Slide four, Chris. Next one.
Sorry.
Well, I, I don't want to get too trapped in this, but the short of it is, there are, if you looked at, if we, if you look at the numbers, we certainly deferred some things. Everything on that list is needed. It drove up, it reduced costs for borrowing. Of course, the cost will be borne by FY '22, but it was important to make sure that we look ahead and make sure FY '22, see how we are in FY '22. It would then potentially drive up, there you go, it would then potentially drive up costs in the FY '22 plan, as you can see here, going from 4.8 to 5, almost 5.3, which would mean the FY '23 budget's borrowing costs would go up as a result of that. And then it actually goes down a little bit according to this plan in FY '23. So I think it's important to note in the late, in the moving things around as a result of the impacts that we're feeling now. There will be downstream impacts, of course, but I just want to make sure that, you know, sometimes things get kind of locked, they get presented like this and then it's like, well, you said it was going to be here and it's not. And so now it doesn't seem like it's legitimate, but the reality is, especially now, circumstances have shifted quite a bit. And so our hope is to be able to do the FY '22 plan and present that to you actually in a couple of months. And really be able to say, we think we're through the worst of it. We're going to go forward with the plan as we have it here. But it may be that some of those things have to get deferred as well. So I just want everyone to be mindful about when the decision gets made to defer something and then when the financial impact of all that is. And that these, these columns here, in part because of, every year, capital plans change because of conditions in the field, of bidding climate or whatever, add a major new variable to the, to that. And things, we just have to be kind of patient and nimble with how these things are going to potentially change. So, all right, you can close it, Chris. That's all I wanted to know.
Are there any additional questions from the Select Board or the Susan? Unmute yourself.
Could you go back to that slide for just a moment, please? The one that was just up. Something jumped out at me that I, I'm familiar with all of the, all of the items except the Emerson Home/Museum, which doesn't pertain to FY '21. It's for FY '22, but what is that?
So that has to do with the lots that were being sold over by, over by the Concord Museum. And that actually came up, I'm going to have to pull the warrants, but I know that it came up last year and the year before. And it's sort of a systematic purchasing. So we're trying to put away money, not every year, but for the acquisition as those become available. They immediately abut the Emerson Thoreau Amble and it actually ends up being a continuation over to where the Ice House is. And so what will happen is that there's a bunch of different plots there and I think it's subdivided into four or five plots. And so the town would like to purchase those. And one of them also immediately abuts the affordable area that's right there near the Ice House. And so I think there was thought of extending that and doing another duplex there. And so this is just a placeholder there to fulfill that goal.
Thank you.
Right. I don't see any more hands from the Select Board or the Finance Committee, so I will open it up to the audience. And I have one question. So, Chris, could you turn on Diane Proctor's video? All right, Diane, please go ahead.
Sorry, Mike. It's, I'm suddenly being kicked off the Zoom, but I'm sure I'll get back. My question is, is that I see that, thank you very much, I see that you have.
Just for the record, Diane.
Oh, I'm sorry, Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. I apologize. I see that you've put aside some money for the Emerson Parking Lot. I wonder if there is an existing plan, what that plan might be, and how abutters and citizens can be appraised of what that's going to cost and what the impact will be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to answer that, Stephen, or did you want to?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Okay. So when Emerson Umbrella was renovating, one of the things that they had worked on with the former CPW Director and prior town manager was the idea of expanding the parking lot a bit to increase the number of spaces that were there. And as you know, that's shared with also the, the library. And so my understanding is that the Emerson Umbrella architect worked with the town's engineers to come up with some idea where they could elongate and kind of get rid of a little bit of the buffer that's on that southern end of the parking lot there, but only compact cars were going to be able to fit in there. And the former town manager didn't feel like that was really representative of what they were looking for. So the project was ultimately put on hold. So what has now happened is that I think people are starting to ask about it because it's been a number of years. And so the town's engineering staff, actually, we just had a meeting about a week and a half ago to try to understand where that was. And, and they're going to try to put it back where it's just a resurfacing. And, and of course, whenever they do that, they would have to notify the abutters and people would be able to come out. But they're still not entirely clear on how much, if anything, they're going to put into the buffer zone because, and I'm sure you recall, through Emerson Umbrella's renovation projects, people were very committed and very attached to that vegetative buffer. And I don't think that Public Works is looking to destroy that, particularly because they just replanted all of that. And so I think what you might see is just some, some curb cutting, some mill and overlay and maybe some one-way directionals that are going there. But that'd be for fiscal year 23, as of, as it is right now, done at the same time as the Harvey Wheeler Parking Lot. So those projects are tied together.
Thank you.
Yeah. Now, the big thing was that was in the plan pre-COVID-19 and that was one of the projects that has definitely slid as a result. So that's why it's, we don't really have a more specific plan than that.
Right. Thank you very much. I don't see any additional questions from the audience. So with that, we will move on to the next article, Article 16, the Tax Increment Financing Agreement. I'm going to make the initial presentation and then we are going to hear from Jerry Evans from the CHDC. So.
Can we just pull it up, Mike?
So the first line is just going to say that they moved to take affirmative action on Article 16 as printed in the warrant. Uh huh. Okay, next slide. Okay, so the summary of the article is, it is to, two parts to it. Approve a revised tax increment financing agreement between the town and Junction Village ALF Limited Partnership. The revised agreement is posted online as part of this package. And it also authorizes a select board to actually execute the TIF. Next slide. So the background on this, this has been a project since quite a while ago. It consists of 83 units of affordable assisted living housing for low, very low and moderate income households. The property was given to the CHDC by the state in 2013 with the restriction that the property can only be used for affordable housing and open space. The proposed building would occupy approximately four acres of the site and the remaining approximate eight acres would be protected by, would be protected open space. Next slide. This is an aerial view. You can see the top, the prison, and the dotted blue line down below is the proposed building. And over to the right, you can see the Assabet River. And the next slide is a close-up and is a site of the proposed facility on the, on the site itself. Next slide. So this has been in front of town meeting for a number of years. In 2017, a Community Preservation Committee appropriation of $350,000 for the project was approved. Additional CPC appropriations were approved at town meeting in 2018 and 2019 for a combined $650,000. And at town meeting in 2017, a million dollars was appropriated from free cash. And town meetings 2011, 12 and 13 approved $200 for pre-development, of which 78 remain as earmarked for open space and closing details. And the proposed Junction Village budget included an annual payment of $75,000 to the town and a ground lease to the CHDC. This is important because this was the amount that was in the budget when Fort. because this was the amount that was in the budget when, for taxes and a ground lease, when the project was approved by, when the million-dollar allocation was approved from free cash for the project. Next slide, please. Grantham has applied to the state and received tax credits in the amount of $7.5 million, and when these are sold, the hopeful yield is 6.9 in available funds. Grantham has already, also received 3.325 million in soft debt from DHCD, these are a number of sources, and $485,398 from the home consortium. So, the point here is that there are a lot of participants in trying to make this a viable package. Next slide, please. So, the TIF, the TIF is an application to the state as part of an economic development incentive program, and this particular one is just called a local incentive-only application. If granted, it allows the select board to create an economic opportunity area at the proposed site of Junction Village, and to be able to do that, certain criteria need to be met. And the enabling criteria for this particular project is the creation of 30 full-time positions, ranging from aides to an executive director. If granted, it allows the select board to execute the TIF if approved at town meeting. So, next slide. What is a TIF? A TIF, a Tax Increment Financing Mechanism, allows the town essentially to reduce, up to 20 for a 20-year period, the property valuation of a project resulting from its development in an economic opportunity area. In so doing, the taxes assessed on the property would thereby also be temporarily reduced. Property valuation for the project would vary over the period based on the percentage reduction in valuation contained in the TIF, the tax rate, and the commercial success of the property, because unlike, if you don't know, unlike residential property, property assessments do have to do with the success of the various commercial property. So, the next slide will point out an example. So, the example of this is, if the assessor's property valuation, including personal property, was $10 million, they would have a tax liability of $187,000. The TIF, if it was granted, would reduce, in this example, by 60%. So, what that would do would reduce the assessor's property valuation from 10,000 to four, excuse me, from 10 million to 4 million, and thereby revise the tax liability from 187,000 to 75,000. Next slide, please. The actual revised TIF, as you might recall, when we first began, this was for a 17-year period, it's been revised to a 15-year period. The property value, valuation is $13,982,443, and it has a property valuation percentage reduction of 77%. A draft agreement is on a file with the town clerk and is also posted on the town website, as I said, as part of this material. Next slide, please. So, some important points that I want to make. The, this kind of a project is, is very complicated because, on the one hand, the rates, because all, because all of the units in this property are affordable, the amount that can be charged for all, all of these units is fixed, so the revenue for the particular project is fixed. The amount that project will pay in taxes if the TIF is approved is exactly the same amount that was proposed in the budget when town funds were allocated to support the project. This is important because in the MOU that we signed with the organization, they stated that they would not ask for any additional funds, and they haven't. This is the same amount that they proposed in the original presentation to the town. It's very important to understand that if the finances, the income statements and capital budgeting for the project does not appear feasible, the tax investor will simply not purchase the projects. If you don't know, the tax investor, while it's $7.5 million, I'm forgetting exactly what the net would be, these are paid out over a 10-year period, and the tax investor needs to be involved in the project for the full 15 years of the TIF. That's why the TIF is laid out in a 15-year period. And the tax investor is not going to invest in this property if they do not see a budget that allows this project to be financially feasible. And I've said before, because the project is restricted to affordable housing, its revenues are fixed and limited by regulation. They cannot invest in this affordable housing project without documented assurance of long-term financial feasibility. And last point I want to make, because I've heard a number of people raise this point, the town is not foregoing any revenue by granting the TIF. There is no alternative project. If the TIF isn't granted, there won't be a project, and the town will lose 83 units of affordable assisted living housing and the tax and grant lease fees. So I think this is very important. If we had two or three competing projects, we could talk about which one would give the town the most revenue or how much revenue would be foregone if we chose A over B, but that's not the case here. The only project that we have in front of us is this one, and this is the TIF that is necessary to make the project feasible over the life of this project. And when the TIF ends, the project can continue to be feasible because, as you will recall, Grantham will take out an $8 million loan in order to make sure this project gets built, and that loan will expire at the time the TIF expires, so that the debt and payment on the, debt and principal payment on the $8 million loan can then be used, instead of making a debt payment, can be used to offset operating expenses and allow us then to get the tax according to what will be the valuation of the property at that time. So, next and last slide, then, is simply the same as the first one, that the town take affirmative action on Article 16 as printed in the warrant. So, next, Chris, if I could ask you to turn on the audio and video for Jerry Evans from the CHDC, he has a statement that he would like to make.
Hold on.
Probably stop screen sharing.
Jerry has joined us, I don't know if this-
While we're working to bring Jerry Evans in, I just want to point something out to any attendee who does want to make a comment. When you're brought in to join the panel and make your comment, you'll see a brief interval where Zoom sort of disconnects, or there's a little bit of flurry on your screen to show that you're changing your status, you are not being dropped from the call, you're being moved from one state to another, just a procedural matter.
But, thank you, Dean. So, I see Jerry's name, so I, I hope that-
I'm here.
-making progress. All right, Chris, are we going to turn on his video, or is it just an audio?
Jerry, can you turn on your video?
There you go. All right, Jerry, allow, please identify yourself for the record.
Jerry Evans, 1844 Main Street. Thank you, Mike, for the opportunity. Junction Village has been an ongoing project which started in the mid-'90s. The town was owed affordable homes from the Waldenwood Project, which bought out a development near Waldenwood that would have contained affordable units. The culmination of the promise was the state giving the land behind the prison to CHDC. There were several fits and starts to the development of the property until, following a competitive RFP process with extensive public comment, CHDC awarded the project to Grantham. Currently, neither the town nor CHDC receives any revenue or income from the property. In February 2016, Grantham and CHDC entered into a development agreement for the project. That agreement states that the amount Grantham will pay to CHDC under a ground lease will depend upon the negotiation of a payment in lieu of taxes, pilot, or a TIF agreement with the town. Originally, it was felt that the pilot would be the way to go. However, the town assessor felt that the TIF was the better option. This is how we arrived at where we are. It was an oversight by the CHDC board that the discussions took place so far down the road and not a last-minute development, development ploy by the developer. Here we are at the proverbial finish line, and the tax issue is up for approval. On behalf of the board, as the only remaining board member from that time era, I apologize it was not brought up earlier. As I mentioned, we're at the finish line of a long process. There's been seven town meetings for this project, all successful. The state has contributed above their standards, demonstrating their commitment to the project, which is a credit to the developer and the town. This is the last approval, and then the project is ready to go. As Mike mentioned, there's no Plan B, so we want to move this forward. Thank you. You're muted, Mr. Chairman.
Can't read my lips, sorry. Mr. O'Haney, and I know, is here, and I wonder if he wants to make a statement, or do you just want to be on hand, Walter, to answer any questions that may come up?
Hey, Mike, thank you, and I would like to make a statement if that's possible.
Yes, it is. If you, do you want to have your video turned on? Are you decent?
Yeah, I'm decent, it's not a problem.
Okay. All right. Chris, can you manage that technology feed?
Yep.
And Walter, when you come on, would you please identify yourself for the record?
Sure. So, I think I'm on Autumn, on audio.
There, you're pretty dark, but I can see you. Oh, no, that's Andrew, yeah, sorry.
Sorry, Walter, we're promoting you to a panelist, you should reconnect. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Why don't you go ahead, Walter?
There you go. Okay, perfect, thank you, everyone, appreciate it. Mike, Jerry, and everyone here tonight, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak and to see that we're finally at the finish line for, for this project and all that it is going to offer and bring to the town of Concord. So, really, the reason for the TIF is the necessity that we have to keep a budget for, for this project. As we know, the revenues here are restricted, and to be able to present something to both the bank as well as the tax credit investor to make the project financially feasible, this is an area of importance. So, we talked about job creation, you know, these are considered hero jobs, especially everything that we have seen in the last four or five months. It is really heartwarming to see people put themselves in a place where they are taking care of our most at-risk population in the job that they have done these past few months, not having concerns of people that they're leaving at home and people that they are making sure that they care for. They know they have a job and they're here to do it, so appreciate that, and these are people that we want working in our community to take care of our most vulnerable population. Also, this is going to add 83 units of affordable housing stock for the town of Concord, and going to help keep us hopefully over that 10%. In projects like this, being age-restricted, will also have less impact on town services. This project will add economic vitality to downtown. We are talking about residents, we're talking about staff, we're talking about families, and people that can hopefully spend some time in the downtown with us being so close to it and being able to enjoy the shops and the restaurants and everything that it has to offer. It's a development of a property that's in need of revitalization, and this project will help put a, it's basically a $20 million development, and besides the project and the building that's going to go there and the services that it's going to offer, there's also going to hopefully be at some point some open space, and having our project there is a, is a way to get there. And Grantham is actually committing, as we recall, $50,000, and helps to be able for us to get there as well. So, in an effort to move this project forward and all the recognition that the state has seen, that the town has done, they actually did something which was quite significant. One is that they awarded this project in time of crisis, which is really just amazing to think that they are making awards of affordable housing and development and spending money during these economic times. But assisted living communities are typically maxed at $5 million in allocation for funds, for tax credits. None of my projects have ever received anything over $5 million, but recognizing what this project is and the cost that it's going to be to build and the site that it needs to redevelop on, they actually allotted $7.5 million in credits, which is just outstanding. In addition, they also did an increase in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund money as well. Typically, they are maxed out at a million, but for this project, they actually awarded 1.5 million. You know, I do understand that there are obviously questions around every project that comes through town, and you do have some people that are going to question you every step of the way, and we've heard those in this community, and we've also heard them in other communities we've developed in, but I do know our town is committed to creating affordable housing. We have created our own Affordable Housing Trust with the town and are trying to be creative in ways to develop and promote affordable housing, so this project will bring that to the town. This project will help our neighbors with a variety of socioeconomic backgrounds and allow for greater diversity and inclusivity in our town, and that's what we're fighting for. So, I hope that after tonight's discussion, people really get a good understanding of our project and will vote affirmatively to move this TIF forward. Thank you.
It's a little late, but could you identify yourself and tell us where you live for the record?
Sure, Walter O'Haney, 488 Elm Street, Concord, Mass. Managing Director for the Grantham Group, which is managing agent to the project and developer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so, let me turn first to the finance committee and the select board. If you have a question or a comment, raise your hand. There, I see your hand. We'll go Terry, Mary, and Phil.
And Tom.
And Tom.
And Brian.
Okay, well, just to, don't, don't confuse me, I can do three or four people, but that's it. Terry, you're first.
Hey, I have some questions for Mr. O'Haney. This project will help low and moderate-income seniors and the community, that's great, and Mr. O'Haney, if the town does not vote to approve the TIF, then will you still be able to proceed with the Junction Village project?
No, not as it currently stands, unfortunately, Terry. The taxes that are planned to be assessed to the property just make it financially infeasible to move forward.
So, you're saying that the TIF will help to make the project financially feasible?
Correct.
Okay, and we, we understand you're a very experienced developer, very well-known in, in the state, and what I really don't understand, maybe you can help me with this, why did you sign the MOA with the CHDC in 2017, and I'm going to quote from item 11, it says, "The developer agrees not to request any financial support from the town other than the town funds for the construction and development of the project."
Sure. So, if you remember, we had something called the Junction Village Task Force. Terry, do you remember that by chance?
Yes.
Okay, great, and one of the recommendations they have for the project was to create a TIF, am I correct?
Yes.
You know, that, that is what people are saying now, I'm going to pull that up.
That's exactly, that's exactly what it says. It says there are more of, at the very bottom, excuse me.
That's not exactly my read of it. When, when I'm looking at this document right here, it's a one-page document from April of 2016, and it lists four actions by the town, and then it says, "Other possible sources of financial assistance." The TIF is the very last one, and it seems a very outside she- The TIF is the very last one, and it seemed a very outside chance that we would need it, and it didn't really look like a recommendation from this committee at that time.
Yeah. So when we, when we did get the recommendations from the Junction Village Task Force, as Jerry had mentioned, we worked on a development agreement with CHDC, and that is obviously one of the reasons why we have it in the development agreement as well, that we would move forward to apply for either a pilot or a TIP agreement.
But I don't understand, okay, the Junction Village Funding Committee was in 2016.
Correct.
MOA was signed in 2017 after that.
Yep.
And again, it says, "The developer agrees not to request any financial support from the town except for the $2 million in construction and development that we've already promised." So this is what I'm having trouble with.
Sure.
It just seems that the TIF is, it's not direct cash, but it is helping to make the project financially feasible.
Correct.
I guess I just have a comment then.
Okay.
To the town. It just appears to me that the way this process has been handled, just not everything has been very forthcoming. And this is the second time that this has happened, because when the bids first went out, there was also $500,000 that was suddenly needed because the developer was surprised we were going to need a sewer system for the project. And so I just want to ask the citizens of Concord, when you're deciding how to vote on this article, you know, we definitely want affordable housing. That's not the question, but we want to be able to trust the developer to build quality homes, care well for the seniors, and not come back for the town for any more financial assistance. Thank you.
Mary?
Thank you, Mike. I've got a comment and then two questions. My first comment is, is that you emphasized in your presentation that the town was aware of the budget of $75,000 for taxes and the land lease to the CHDC when we approved the free cash and the CPC funds. And yet, several months ago, at the Finance Committee, we took a straw vote to ask the people at the Finance Committee if they were aware of that when they voted to approve the free cash and the CPC funds. And in fact, the majority of the finance people were not aware of that. And we tend to look at these kinds of things. So we, that committee was not aware of that when we approved or when we voted for the free cash funds to be released. We can't go back and redo that vote, but we can do something now about the TIF to maybe make it less financially, you know, cost us less now.
I just, Mary, ask you to go back and look at the presentation that was made at town meeting. It has it quite explicitly in there what the tax and ground lease payments were going to be to the town. I don't.
I don't think, I don't think people understood that that was going to require a TIF, and I don't think people really understood that that was going to be significantly less than what a, what an assessed value would be for most property. So.
Well, that seems.
Well, I'm just saying what happened at the Finance Committee meeting, where we went around and we took a straw vote, and the people in that meeting were not aware of that when they voted to approve it. Okay, I'm just going by that, not, that's, that happened, okay. My questions are, first of all, my first question is, I know you don't have any flexibility with the revenue because you're affordable, and this is a question for Mr. Ohanian. Do you have any flexibility about the management fee or the development fee? That's my first question.
Yep. So the development fee is part of the capital budget, so this is the real estate expenses really are the operating budget. And on the management fee, it's the cost of what it is to, for us to manage that community, which is in line with the marketplace for our type of housing. And, you know, just to kind of go back, it's also something that has been in the budget from the beginning as well.
Okay. And my, what about the development fee?
Development fee is part of the capital budget. That's the cost that we have going into the project, as well as our fee for time in getting this project up and going. As we mentioned, this has been going on since 2013, and.
I understand, but, so I guess, is there any flexibilities?
There isn't, no.
Okay. So, and my second question is, the MOA is interpreted as some people as meaning that Grantham was, or Christopher Heights, or whomever, was not going to ask the town for any more money. And I know that it's open to interpretation, but starting here and starting now, is it safe to assume that going forward, Grantham or Christopher Heights or whomever would not come back to the town for more money?
The town, excuse me, Grantham will not be coming back to the town for more money.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mary, I would add that we did deal with one part of that in a previous conversation because there was some issue raised about building permits and things like that, which Grantham going to perhaps be coming back to ask for some accommodation on that. As Walter just indicated, they said they would not.
So they're going to be paying the full building permit value?
Yep. So the building, the building permit value is in the budget that we have, correct?
It's both the capital budget and the operating budget were also part of the material that was presented to both the CPC and the town when those votes for appropriations were made. Phil, I think you are, is that all, Mary?
I'm done. Thank you.
Phil?
So let me say, first of all, I support affordable housing. I, as a lawyer, have spent hundreds of thousands of hours representing low-income tenants in court, so this isn't because I'm not in support of affordable housing. But I do feel like I'm concerned about the level of transparency we've had for this project, both for this article and the previous articles. I feel like it's being rammed down our throats. So I have two questions. First, has the town ever agreed to a TIF in the past? And what about our peer communities? How many of our peer communities have agreed to TIFs and for what circumstances, if we know?
I know the town has not done a TIF before.
Okay.
I know that there have been TIFs in other communities. I don't have those facts here, Phil. I know, Walter, you've had TIFs in some of your other projects, as I recall.
Correct.
Which ones? Can you tell us?
Sure, sure. We've had TIFs in both our Attleboro and Marlboro community. I've had pilot agreements in our Worcester and our Webster community. And, you know, TIFs are common practice when you bring job creation. And, you know, once again, this project will bring 30 jobs, and the hope is that that's the reason why a TIF from the state's perspective would be approved. But we also know for, for us, it does help get our 83 units of affordable housing as well for the town.
No, that's not.
No, I have a question. It's more of a legal question, and I'm not saying this as a lawyer, but how do you square this request for what I calculate is $1.68 million in tax breaks over 10, 15 years with the, with the provision in paragraph 11 that Terry mentioned? And I'll just read. "The developer agrees not to request any financial support from the town other than the town funds for the construction and development of the project, i.e. the $2 million." Wasn't that the premise on which town meeting agreed to the $2 million? And isn't this request inconsistent with that? And one other point, this was 2017. The 2016 development agreement and the, and the task force recommendations preceded that. So the town meeting was voting not based on the 2016 development agreement between CHDC and Grantham or the task force. They were voting on this memorandum of agreement from 2017. So I believe the town meeting understood that there was not going to be any further request for financial support. I don't see how you can square that with this $1.68 million tax break.
Okay. Is that it, Phil?
Yeah, I guess I'd like an answer to it. I don't know whether you want to answer it or Mr. Ohanian, or they have a lawyer, but it just seems that it's inconsistent with what we understood at town meeting.
Well, I think I've tried to respond before. When this presentation was made to town meeting, it was clear, both in the pro formas and in the presentation to town meeting, that the project would pay a certain amount of tax revenue and ground lease money to the town. And that, that was in the presentation, that was made perfectly clear, and that is exactly the same amount that is being proposed now. So I understand how you see it. But having been there and having actually made that presentation and reviewed the financial statements when it was being done, this was something I expected to happen, and I was, as you probably know, because I've said so publicly before, and we heard from, we heard from Jerry, I was very disappointed and surprised that we didn't get this request to the town much earlier than, than we did. And I've said that to Walter and to others, but this was something that, if you look at the other items in that sheet that Terry pulled out, I don't exactly remember what they go, but one was, I think, additional borrowing, Terry? And this seemed to be the one that was most consistent with what the budget of the project could do. So I, Phil, I understand, I understand and your perspective on it, but my perspective is they said they were going to do this, 75,000, and that's exactly what they're doing. So.
Hey, I just have another comment, and that is, Mr. Ohanian just said Grantham will not be coming back to the town for more money. How do we know we won't get another request for more financial assistance, but it won't be money? It will be some other form of support, whatever that might be. I'm just saying that if we're going to do business with this developer, we have to take this into account going forward. I suspect we're not, this isn't the end of the request.
Well, I, okay, but it's not just a developer. I will tell you that I was expecting this, based on the presentation that I made at town meeting and the pro formas that were given to, given to us to review. So this was something I was expecting to happen, not some trick that I thought was pulled on me by a developer. Although I was not happy at all with the fact that it came so late in this process. That's for sure. Thank you. I think I said Tom was going to be next. Then I think I ran out of memory, so.
Mike, it's Stephen. I just, sorry, Tom. Phil asked about other communities, and I know if, if we've moved on from that point, but I could give some perspective on other communities.
Yes, please. Yes.
Please do.
So, you know, and I'm not, and I, this, my comments aren't a rejoinder to any criticism of Junction Village, but I will say, when I learned of Junction Village, the complicated financing and the need for community support looked exactly like a number of projects that I have been, that I've worked directly on and observed in the municipalities and the other municipalities that I've worked in. And so what's happening, the request for a TIF is completely common in projects like this. I mean, the reality is, any project that cannot stand alone as a market-rate project, which affordable housing projects cannot necessarily require contributions from multiple partners, including the state and the municipality. And so this was not an uncommon request. I'll be, I'll be candid. I think if there was something that struck me in all of this, it was that there was actually going to be taxation associated with the parcel, because the parcel is currently under a tax-exempt status, and I was surprised that it wouldn't be developed by a tax-exempt, you know, not-for-profit developer. So I thought, well, you know, this is great, we're going to get 65,000 a year in taxation. So I guess, like I said, I think my, my point is, the Junction Village financing and the partnerships that need to make that happen are completely in line with what I've seen. And I mean, I'm talking dozens of affordable housing projects.
Interesting.
But what sort of communities? Not communities comparable to Concord?
All sorts. And it's not, it's not the comparableness of the community, it's the comparableness of the project and the restriction that is being placed on the project, really. It's, and when you have 100% affordable, that restriction, the market could, you could never make a go of it at market rate. And so it's the level of restriction that really drives most of that.
All right. Thank you. As I said, Tom is next, and then we'll go to Susan, and then, or Shaw.
So, thank you very much, Mike. I've got several comments and a question. First of all, I was very pleased, but also very surprised to hear that the state had granted the 7.5 million in tax credit allowance. How recently did that happen?
Sure. So we actually found out sometime in June that the award was made. I got a call from the state that they had made the award to the project, and they would typically have a large public announcement, but based on what's going on with the pandemic, I can't speak for the governor, obviously, but I don't think he thought it was appropriate to have a public presentation like they would normally have when awards are given for affordable housing.
We did announce about Select Board meetings, so, Tom.
Oh, okay. I would have expected it to be front page on the Journal, but, you know, I, I was blissfully unaware of it having happened, so congratulations. That's a wonderful, a wonderful happening. So I, my comment is that I fully understand how the confusion around the $75,000 payment to the town has arisen, and I think it, I think, in my opinion, it has its root in bullet number four of slide number 10, in which I think there's a very important logical fallacy that relates to the assertion that by accepting that amount of money, the town is not going to forego any revenue. There also is an assumption there that if this project does not go forward, nothing will happen with this parcel or, or with affordable housing in town, that it's as if, you know, that little parcel will become an annex of the Sahara Desert forever and nothing will ever happen there. I don't accept that. I think if this project doesn't go forward, something else will happen there, and what the tax revenue will be from that something else is something that we'll find out at the time. But I think if it's a development that is valued at, I can't remember what the valuation is, $16 million, it's quite possible that we'll, we could see potentially $187,000 annually in tax revenue, which means that by accepting the $75,000, and I'm not taking issue with the fact that we agreed previously to do so, we are foregoing $112,000 of revenue every year, which in Phil's calculation, and I think it's correct, amounts to a $1.68 million subsidy to this project. And I don't necessarily object to that subsidy, but I do object to the fact that we've never taken it into account. It's never been listed as a subsidy. We've talked, we talked initially, when this project came to the Finance Committee, about a $3,000 subsidy from the town to the project. That was, and the project supposedly couldn't go forward with any subsidy less than 3 million. Then it became apparent that it could work out with a 2 million subsidy. But, but this has never been discussed as a subsidy, and in fact, it is. And is it a $1.68 million subsidy? Is it a $1 million subsidy? That's open to debate, but it is a subsidy, and the town is foregoing revenue by accepting $75,000 instead of a ground lease plus whatever taxation the assessors and would levy. So I would like now to ask a couple of questions of Mr. Ohanian, because he's spoken on several occasions about pro formas, and Mike, you yourself mentioned pro formas that were given presumably to the Select Board that, again, presumably described the full extent of the investment, and I'm guessing that these pro formas were either draft offering memoranda that would be presented to investors or lenders or to the purchasers of the, of the tax credits. I think that, well, let me ask, do these documents exist? Are there offering memoranda, or is there an offering memoranda? Are there offering memoranda, or is there an offering memoranda? And is there?
Tom, thank you. So there is a one stop that we create that does both an operational budget and a development budget. And yes, those have been reviewed by both the tax credit investor and by the bank.
And is that something that you would provide to the town, the members of the finance committee and, and other?
They're in the packet that was distributed in support of this article.
All right. I'm remiss in not having read them. So presumably those explain exactly what the returns are with the TIF, and one could do some arithmetic and figure out what the returns would be without the TIF. Have you, those numbers at your disposal? Can you tell us what those returns are?
So the project itself is looking to meet a debt service coverage of 125, and we cannot make a debt service of 125 with the current assessed value of the property because of the taxes that are due.
So that, the, the TIF and the taxes are one element that, that help get to a, a debt service ratio of 1.25. But there are many other factors. And of course, we don't, I guess those are all represented in these documents that are in the support package for this article?
Yes. Could I interject here? My name's Mike Kuchiar, and I'm with the Grantham Group. I'm the director of development for the Grantham Group. I recall going before the finance commission was a back, when, when we're initially supporting the articles that went before town meeting, that would have been back in 2017. These issues were raised, and we were fully transparent throughout the entire process. You have, you know what our returns on investment are. The issue here is, think about this just objectively for a moment. We're building a project that's going to cost $20 million, and even by the assessor's own estimate, it's only going to be worth $16 million. So think about that just off the bat. You're building, you're effectively flushing $4 million down the drain in value, just to, you know. And the other element of this that you have to take into consideration, and that's just on the capital sort of development budget side of things, where we are looking at subsidizing this in order to buy, buy in that affordability. What we're talking about here is operationally, prospectively going forward. Now, the town has provided a very generous contribution in capital to support the project, but operationally, we've been very transparent throughout the process that we are going to need this support in order to make the numbers work. Now, if the town would like to alternatively increase that capital subsidy to the point where we would be paying full taxes, that would require substantial additional amount of, of capital upfront. And we've been, we, when we sat down with CHDC at the beginning of this entire process, we said, here's what makes it work. There's no special sauce here. It's very straightforward. We've been transparent throughout the entire process and forthright about what it takes to make these projects work. And quite frankly, the state, you know, given the history of this particular site, I think it would be more than a blemish on the town's reputation if this project is rejected by, by virtue of rejecting the TIF, in that the entire origin of this project grew out of sort of, quote, you know, the acquisition of the Walden Woods, which the state considered to be an affront to the development of affordable housing to begin with. Now, I'm not saying that, you know, the town is, you know, folks that are in opposition to the project are, you know, harbor some sort of racial animus towards affordable housing generally, but oftentimes, we here in the affordable housing industry, certain dog whistles that sort of suggest, you know, that there are other considerations here. Now, I understand the concerns about transparency, and I think we've been very transparent. You have all of our budget numbers. You have a, had four years of the opportunity to go through them. This is really, we said, here's what it takes to make this project work. Here's operationally what we need in order to buy down the debt, because that's effectively what you're doing by buying this affordability. And I think that this is just, the state is looking for, you know, typically looks to towns to incentivize affordable housing, because this is one way they can do it. You know, at the end of the day, if there's no project, that's 83 forgone affordable units in the town of Concord, and you could be left tomorrow with an unfriendly 40B, you know, after the next census. And that's, you know, then you're really out, then you're not in the driver's seat at all. And the state is not going to look too kindly on Concord's potential objections to that. So I'm just trying to frame this in a larger.
Appreciate it. All right, I just want to make sure you understand that there are no dog whistles here. You've just got folks on the finance committee who are very concerned about the town's finances. I want to make sure we use our finances as best we can to accomplish the goals of the town. I think, who did I, or I thought I'd say you, oh, no, Susan, you are next. Thank you for waving your hand.
Thank you for all this information. I just want to point out a couple of things and then ask, I have some questions. The first time we ever saw these numbers was the hearing on February, I think it was 24th, and the information was given to us literally that day. So in my mind, this is the first substantive discussion we've all, all the committees and the citizens have been able to have on this. And I think that's important to note, because we're in the middle of August.
Susan, you mean the TIF, correct?
The TIF, I do. I mean the TIF.
Not all the material.
No. I will point out, too, that the pro formas have changed from, I think it was last December, to something that was issued recently. Another comment I have is point number four on the, the current agreement says essentially that we're on the hook for 2.6 million, 2,650,000, that that's what the exemption could rise to. Now, Tom gave a number of 1.6, so I, my question is, how do we get to 2.6, which makes us in the, in it for 4.6 million essentially for this project? So I'd like to know where, why that is instead of the 1.6 that, that we were just discussing. I have a couple of other questions, too. The 30 jobs that are proposed, when I look at the operating expenses, there's salary and wage for administrative and for maintenance, and then there, there's a $1.4 million for residence services. So I didn't know, is that outsourced, or why isn't that listed as payroll like the other items? And my, another question is the square footage of, there are, most of the units are studios. I was wondering about the square footage. Looking at the rent, the 150% of median occupants will, will pay between 3,000, I think 3,300 a month. The income pro forma has another, almost equal to the rent is the services that they're going to provide. So if you're renting for 3,000 and then everything meals, any kind of service, laundry, housekeeping is extra, then the tenant can, can expect to pay probably twice that as a month, if you're in the $3,000 range. And then following that, I want to know about the, how people get into this, these housing units. They said that until it's fully subscribed, Concord will have a preference. What happens after that? And my concern is that maybe 10, 15 years down the road, there's nobody from Concord that has, that is in this complex. We're paying the public service cost, because there will certainly be EMT and ambulance costs with a population that is older and possibly disabled. So I'm, in the big picture, I'm wondering whether this is the proper project for Concord.
Okay. So a couple of things there. And so the first is the resident services. That's the onsite staff that we have for nursing and nursing assistants. Those are, those are salary or hourly positions for the, for the project. So they're not outsourced. Those are employees of the community. It's just the way that the, the budget is set up on the state's website, but they are employees of, of the project. So that's number one. Number two is the project itself, and now we have 23 years, our first project opened in 97 of history, and the bulk of the residents are from the communities that we serve. And it was going to help elders or the children of elders that need assisted living. So in all of our projects, the primary residents that live in those communities, just like you have in your current affordable housing stock in Concord, you do have many residents that have come directly from Concord into those types of housing units. And that is also true in all of our Christopher Heights projects. So the way the state has it set up is during the lottery process, when the project opens, we will have a Concord preference. After that, there are rules and regulations, once the project is, the lottery has passed, that you're then basically taking people off of a waitlist to come in, and they could come from other towns. But by definition and by history of, of what we have, the bulk of the residents or the families of the residents that move in are local. So think about it. If you need, if you're looking for your 90, let's see, you know, your 90-year-old mother or father for assisted living, you know, even though you live in Concord, your goal is not to have to travel to the Cape to have her in assisted living. Your hope is that you're bringing her towards you, and she's moving into a place like Christopher Heights. So that is quite common as well. So I think there was another question in there, and.
Yeah, about the 2.6 million that's in the agreement for tax relief, when we just figured it's really closer to 1.6.
Okay. I, I, that's probably not for me to answer, so I'll let someone else answer that.
I don't, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, Susan.
I think it'd be worth knowing, just because it's a million dollars difference.
We'll see if we can get you an answer.
Okay, thank you.
Tell, I think you were.
Thanks, Mike. I guess I have a similar question around the cost. If, if, I remember one of the slides, Mike, that you showed, I don't know, from slide 10, but I think you said that the cost, or that the cost is the same as what was agreed upon there in the budget, or was same as in the budget? I'm kind of curious, is the budget, the town's budget that you were referencing on that slide, or is it the budget for the project? That's sort of one question I have. And maybe related to that is, how does, how did the town arrive at 77% versus 75 or 80 or 90%? Can you help me understand as a newcomer to the issue of finance, as to what the logic there was?
If I can try. 75, 75 was the, the number that the Grantham Group provided that they would be able to pay to still make their project financially feasible. So that's for the 75. And I think the, actually, the earliest discussions of that 75 is it was unclear or unspecified how the breakdown between that 75,000 would be between a ground lease for CHDC and tax revenue. So that number, that, that number was a number that was provided by the Grantham Group that would allow them to be able to put together a budget that was sustainable, so then in the hope that they would get the tax credits, they would be able to sell those tax credits and, and use that money. So that follows directly to your second question, though. If this $75,000 or 65 in taxes and 10 for the ground lease, if that's the amount that Grantham believed that they could do, then you simply work backwards. If this is the assessed value of the property, what does the percentage need to be to get to that number? So it's just an arithmetic problem.
Yep. And so the 75 was in the original agreement from two to three years ago? Is that accurate, or is that a revised number?
No, it's the same number that was presented at town meeting and to the CPC as the amount that Grantham could afford to pay the town in either taxes or ground lease and still have their project be financially feasible.
Thank you. Last follow-up question, Walter. Last follow-up question?
Sure.
So the 75,000 was presented at town meeting a couple of years ago, based on presumably a pro forma that at least Grantham had and which maybe the town had and others had or didn't.
The town had it, it was presented to the finance committee.
And I'm curious, is it possible to take it, to walk through, Walter, the differences in the pro forma then versus now with respect to other changes in the pro forma, which I'm assuming there were changes in income projections, cost projections, et cetera? And I'm wondering where some of, what some of those major categories of changes were? In other words, did the return on investment shake, go up or down in terms of the investors? Did costs go up or down? Again, at a high level, just to understand.
Sure.
What changed and why this couldn't go up or down as a result?
The biggest cost that we have seen that has increased has really been the construction cost, which is why the state has chipped in as much as they have. It's the cost of development. We went from a $16 million project to a $20 million project. And so that's really where the bulk of the money has gone, and which is why the state has had to chip in those extra dollars. But, but also, Patel, what I was trying to say before, and I didn't want to cut you off, so I apologize that I had, I had done that, is if the project does really well, right, this isn't a set amount on the, the amount that the town in CHDC will receive. So, so right now, based on the assessor's value of how this works, he's anticipating it, I forget the exact number off the top of my head, let's say it's $14 million. If, you know, the project does well, and somehow there's a bump in, in income and a bump in rates, and let's say the project is now worth 15 million. So if it's worth 15 million, the exemption is still 77%. So you're, you're paying more in taxes based on the valuation that has increased. So i- if the project does well, there's obviously more funds that are able to, to apply to, to, to pay for either real estate taxes or towards the, the CHD and the ground lease. So those types of things as well happen. And, you know, I, I think, once again, if, if the project, it, it's where I anticipate the project to be. And if the project, for whatever reason, if things go swimmingly and the, the operationally and revenues somehow increase dramatically based on where the rents go with HUD, and, you know, the project is able to sustain and pay more during those 15 years, it will, because this isn't a set amount. It's, it's an exemption based on where we think we are today. But that exemption doesn't increase because the value increases, the exemption amount, the percentage of the exemption stays the same. So just wanted to get that out there.
If the front of the plan declines, there's less revenue?
I, I apologize. Say that again?
If the value declines, there's less revenue to the town, or is the 75 a floor?
So the 75 is the floor. So what we'll do is, okay, long story short, I'm not, I don't want to take up a lot of time. Basically, is the way the, the agreement will read is the CHDC, i- if, if the taxes go down, CHDC will get the benefit of that extra money. So the, in, in essence, it's still within the town, the $75,000 is still there.
Yeah. And I tried to make that point in the, on slide number seven, where it talked about property valuation being dependent upon the tax rate and the commercial success of the property.
Sure.
Hey, Mike, I just, sorry to, I'm sorry to jump in. I just, I wanted to, Susan had that question about the difference, and I just wanted to connect Walter's answer to, to what I believe she was asking. Okay, okay. So you were saying the total value of the 2.65 million in the TIF agreement, but Walter's just saying is if things go great and the, the value of the increment, value of the, basically the value of the TIF hits 2.65, or I think it's, whatever that number, it was originally three, but because we, it was originally 3 million, but because we shortened it from 17 to 15 years, we're proposing to shorten it from 17, 15 years, we also reduce the amount on a prorated basis. So that is, once it hits that amount, once the value of the TIF hits that amount, right now, we're projecting it near 15, but it could be sooner than that. Then the TIF goes away, and he's, and the property owner is paying full taxation, right, Walter?
Correct.
Right. So the, but, but when you say the difference between that and Tom's number, Tom's number base, and I don't want to speak for you, Tom, but I, I heard, when I heard you describe it, it was based on the, the premise that a project that's fully taxable could be built on the site, and so we're foregoing that million something because of we're not doing a fully taxable project. But I think the point I've heard Mike try to make, and I think the, and based on the history of the project, with the current restrictions, I don't know that, that I history of the project, with the current restrictions, I don't know that, that a fully taxable project would be achievable there. And so Susan, that's the difference between the two numbers. The 2.6 number is, is a part of the TIF agreement between the town and Junction Village. The other number is based on a what-if, I believe.
Okay, so we're, but the point is, we're, we're on the hook for 2.650. The town is paying the tax relief.
I, I don't know that I would say we're on the hook for it, it just is, once, once he's gotten the benefit of a TIF worth 2.64 million, that's the end, that's the maximum exposure for the value of the TIF.
Thank you.
All right, Jane, and then Brian.
Hi, thanks. And I know that Brian's been waiting in others, so this is just a very quick question, but it occurred to me, we've talked about the benefits to the town of the, of the one-time Concord preference to those applying for assisted living. And, and I know that Walter has said that it, very typically, this would just continue to be filled with, with local residents. I don't know how the, I, I heard you mention 30 professional jobs. Have you ever operated in a way that would encourage local, local hiring as well?
Sure, I mean, that, it's obviously only a benefit to the community itself, just for someone for commuting back and forth into Concord. Absolutely, we'll work with, you know, Stephen and the town, or any other resource that you may have, that would locally allow us to hire people that are local. They're going to have the history of the town, they're going to know our residents, family's going to feel comfortable knowing someone at the front desk that maybe is from town. It's, those are huge successes for the project. So absolutely, those would be big, big benefits to us.
Thank you. Brian, you're muted.
Hi, this is a two clar, two clarifying questions for you. Sorry for the mask.
Okay.
So, so with respect to the, the credits themselves, now that you have them in hand, do you have an investor lined up already, or do you have to go through the syndication process? And given the mar, the way the markets are moving, I'm trying to understand if there's an audience for that.
Sure, thank you. It's a very, very good question. So we do have a syndicator who we have shopped the project to, they are working with their investors to review assisted living as a portfolio option. They have other of our projects in their portfolio, so they are very interested in, in getting another deal done. But besides the syndicator that we've used on other projects, where, as part of Mike's role, we also shop it to other syndicators that are out there. And even though March, April, and May, obviously very challenging times, very hard hit on our industry, the good news is, everything that, many things that our towns in our state have done have really helped decrease the number of cases that you see in assisted living in the nursing homes, and people have actually started to move into communities like ours again, and census has started to get back to where it needs to be, which is going to give these investors a lot of comfort in the fact that it's still an asset class that they're willing to invest in. So both between the tax credit investor, as well as the mortgage, Brian, I've also started to shop that as well, and we have not had people be spooked or say, you know, not now. So we're continuing down those avenues. You know, the big thing they wanted to see is, they wanted to see that you actually have the, the funds awarded from the state. And now that we have that, they're spending time and resources trying to put a package together that makes sense.
Okay. And then my, my last question, clarifying question is, when I arrived at this conversation, I, I, 40B was the, one of the drivers to really kind of push this through, or at least that was my impression. And so I was curious to know, do, because you, we've been in this process with you, do these 83 units apply to the 2020 census? Or do we, did we blow through that, and now it's kind of like we have more runway here? So theoretically, yeah, one way or the other, we, we, you know, i- if the town decided not to do this, it doesn't matter anyway, because we're not getting, we're not getting credit for the 2020 census anyway. So, you know, that gives us another 10 years to make up our minds, to figure out what's going on, theoretically. I'm, I'm just trying to clarify, like, what is, how, how does this process work? Maybe that's a Mike Holton Lawson question.
Oh, Walter, you can answer, I suppose.
It, it's actually, I don't exactly, so the 2020 census will be completed, will come out, and from what all indications, which I understand, is Concord will drop below its 10%. What happens is, is Concord will, once I pull the building permit, those 83 units, from my understanding, go, go on, and then you have a certain time to get the project to get certificate of occupancy, and then at that point, it's fully on.
Okay.
Thank you.
It'll be--
You're very welcome.
It'll be fully on as soon as the building permits are, are issued. Good, thank you. Go ahead. Dean?
Yeah, I have a, a couple of kind of technical questions. So we're, the, the project is identified, and we've talked about 83 units of affordable housing. And I know that there are a lot of very complex ways in which affordable, affordability is calculated. But in assisted living, is this a mix of affordable housing, which is, you know, has to qualify for certain income tiers, and other units, which are market rate, which kind of balance out the thing, but you get credit for all 83? Can you please just comment on that? And then I have some follow-ups, depending on that, how that's answered.
Yep, sure. So this project is unique in that 100% of it is rent restricted. So the rents are restricted even on what we would consider the market units, the non-tax credit units. So the tax credit units are the 43 units. Out of those 43 units, 26 of them are for 60% of below the area median income, and 17 or 30% of below the area median income. And for those residents, they might be on a state subsidy to have their, to, to help pay for, not their rent, but their services that they receive at the community. On the 150% units, those residents will pay a rent, and then for the care that they receive, they will pay privately for those before they spend down their assets, and then go on to one of the subsidized units.
So--
The nice thing, Dean, just to give you an idea about our communities, is, I think Phil had mentioned, he helped low-income tenants in, in court. I, I've been doing this for 23 years, and I can tell you today, I have never been to housing court. I have never evicted a resident because of money. And the reason why that I can say that--
That was where I was going, Walter. That's, that wasn't my question. The, my question was really leading towards the 40 units that are not in the 60 and below categories, the 150. How much flexibility do you have on those 40 units to, you know, to charge a, you know, a rent that the market will sort of bear? I mean, that's, to, in order to get more revenue into the project. I'm just, I'm just asking that question because I, I need to just understand, you know, anything there where there might be some flexibility in your budgets, that's all.
Yeah, there, there isn't, unfortunately.
So, because, because those are fixed, in other words, there, what fixes the rent of the, of the 40 non, you know--
Yeah, it's, it's the deed that goes along with the land. The land dictated that you could not have anyone live there above 150% restriction, and Jerry--
So that's, that's, that's part of the land lease that comes from, say, the state, or the, you know, the, the state's constraint. It's not--
Yeah, I, I believe the way CHDC got the land was to commit to it.
Okay.
But I, I don't know the institutional history, but that's my understanding.
That's fine. Okay, so that clarifies that for me. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, so now I want to ask a question, which is probably more directed at the select board who are crafting the TIF.
Sure.
And that is, that the goal of this, for the community, is to get affordable housing. The way in which we actually apply for and get this TIF is to create an opportunity zone so we can create some jobs. Now, that's nice, but that's not the goal of the project for us. It's, it's, it's a good thing, and the state likes to see job creation, but our goal is to create an affordable housing complex. There's nothing in the TIF that says if the, if the state, operating as an agent for the IRS, finds that the project drops below its, its requirement to meet affordability goals, and it loses some piece of its tax credit in a given year through that audit process, we're still on the hook to give them a tax credit. And there's no clause in there, and I think I would like to see something in that TIF that says, if the IRS reduces the amount of a tax credit in a given year through the audit process, because they're failing in the affordability goals that, that the project qualifies for to get the tax credit, our TIF ought to responsibly also reduce itself by the same percentage. I think a paragraph like that is a reasonable amendment to the TIF language in the TIF agreement. Does that, does that make sense? I mean, I'm just trying to throw that out there, if that makes sense.
Just to speak to that slightly, it kind of confused us two separate issues. One is the tax credit compliance period, which is a federal issue, and then the TIF being a state-level issue. You know, there's a lot of hooks and, you know, regulatory hooks into the project. You know, we are obligated to maintain our level of affordability. If there is a tax credit clawback, we're no longer the operators of the project, because in that case, our investor will have already, already excised us for failing to adhere to our partnership, our, our obligations under the tax credit program. So you won't, it won't be with the, the entity that we represent. However, so that's one issue. Now, the TIS, the state's TIF statute does have some additional hooks in it as well to ensure performance-based. So, you know, they're looking at, TIF is looking at the job side of things. The TIF is how we get to the, to the operational issue.
I, you know-- For a second, Michael, I don't mean to be, to be brief, we're gonna, we've been on the call for a long time this evening. There is a serious disconnect between the fact that we're getting this TIF put together and the goals of the town. The town's op, the town's op, you know, goals and objectives are to create affordable housing. And this TIF is fundamentally based on a, on a, you know, a workaround to allow us to create the TIF. So we, the jobs are jobs, and, and the state really wants to see jobs created, but the town wants to see affordable housing created. So I don't think it's unreasonable for us to put something in the TIF that says, if you fall off the rails, then we, we will all, and the, and the IRS stops granting or reduces the tax credit, we reduce our tax credit. I think that's reasonable. It, it, our goal is, is affordable housing. The IRS's goal is affordable housing. The state's goal is affordable housing. The TIF wants to create jobs. It's a disconnect. That's all there is.
Thank you.
So I think a, a quick paragraph added to the TIF that, you know, just spells that out, it would be helpful. That's all.
All right, do I see any? Terry?
I have some follow-ups.
Hold on, Terry. Jerry, were you going to respond to that?
I want to respond to something that Tom had brought up. I'll be happy to wait.
Okay, go ahead, Terry.
Right, I wanted to respond to some of the other comments. First of all, Mike, I did find, again, this document, it is, I believe, on the website in the deck. It's April 22, 2016, from the Junction Village Funding Advisory Committee. The chairman was Greg House, and it lists, as our final, this is our final report. Four actions by the town, which we did do. Voters allocated $1 million from free cash, $1 million from CPC, Concord Housing Foundation seeking $200,000, and the Home Consortium trying to get another $200,000. Those were the four actions by the town. Then there's another section, other possible sources of financial assistance. And under those four, we have done none of those. And the TIF is the last one. The four, the other ones are a transit-oriented development bond, a mass works, and securitized cash flow. We haven't done any of these things. So that's why this 2016 memo seemed to make the TIF a remote possibility along with these other things, like the transit bond, and then seemed to be superseded by the 2017 MOA, which we've talked about already tonight. So another follow-up that I have is the $75,000. We've heard tonight that several people really didn't understand there was going to be a TIF, and other people knew that the $75,000 was in the budget, meaning in Grantham's pro forma, not the town budget. And so I guess my question on this one is to Mr. O'Haney, and if you knew back in 2016 or 17 about the $75,000, why you didn't talk to the assessor way back then and waited until, you know, I think it was a year ago now, 2019?
Sure. Well, as the project became more real, and we were getting feedback from DHDC on next steps to take to get an approval, one of the things that we needed to do is to firm up that what I had in there for taxes and other expenses was legitimate, and so that's when I ended up booking the meeting with the town assessor.
Okay, but it, 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 just, I, I, it's hard for me to understand that--
Sure.
--with such an experienced developer, that you wouldn't have checked with the assessor before you put it in the pro forma.
Yeah, but, but, yeah, sure, but we do have other projects, and I was basing the, the taxes similar to what I pay in other towns.
Right, but they have different valuations. I, I know, you and I have been over this, we can--
Understood, Terry. I, I appreciate the comment.
Very. And just, um, follow-ups, very quickly. How long is the mortgage part? How many years?
Yep, so it will most likely be a 15-year mortgage with a 30-year amortization.
So you're not sure yet? You say most likely?
Yep. That's, that's what we've been discussing with the mortgage holders--
Uh-huh.
--with the banks. I mean, I don't have, I don't have a tax credit investor either, nor do I have the, the, the final from the bank either, correct? These are all things that are, you know, once again, the award was given, these are things that are being done now, is the due diligence, the shop, very similar to, handled very similarly to how I handle all my other projects.
Is there any possibility of getting, let's say, a 10-year mortgage and having a 10-year TIF?
So the TIF is really to show the tax credit investor. So the tax credits, Terry, just so you know, are 10 years of credits, five years of compliance. The tax credit investor has to have assurances for the full 15 years while the credits could be clawed back. So that's the importance of the TIF. So going to a 10-year TIF does not meet the needs of where the investor is.
Okay, that's really interesting. I've never heard that before. Can you just go over that a little more slowly? You said 10 years of credits and five years of compliance?
Yep, so what happens is, the credits are $750,000 per year to the tax credit investor for 10 years, which is how you come up with 7.5 million.
Hmm.
Okay. The tax credit investor to, is, the federal government, the IRS, makes sure that they are providing low-income housing during that entire 10 years. And it's not just the 10 years of credit, they also make sure that there's an additional five years of that housing is suiting the appropriate income residence in those apartments. So those credits could be clawed back within those 15 years. That's why the 15-year TIF is so critical to the tax credit investor, because they have to be able to show that their budget is working for that entire 15-year period. When we talk about affordability restrictions for this project, it goes well beyond the 15 years. It's going to go for basically the life of the project, the life of, the life of the ground lease of the project. So to get our project approved, and to get the state approval, to get the credits, that's what they ended up making, not making us, but that's what we ended up presenting to them, that this will be a long-term affordable project for the community.
Okay, thank you. And finally, just--
You're welcome.
--on what Mary Hartman was asking. So Mary asked you if Grantham would come back for any type of financial assistance, and you said, no, Grantham will not. What about Christopher Heights? Will they come back for any type of financial assistance?
No, none whatsoever.
Thank you.
Hopefully referral of a resident to move in, but that's about it.
Jerry, do you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, what I wanted to say is that somewhere in the 2010, 2011, there was a RFP that CHDC put out-- there was a RFP that CHDC put out. It was about, for what I can remember from previous boards, it was 15 different developers that responded. Went to the neighbors with these 15 different options. Single-family houses, multifamily houses, big developments, little developments, commercial developments, Walters developments, all developments. And the neighbors basically said absolutely no way for single-family housing. Absolutely no way for multifamily housing. Absolutely no way for anything. So the only thing that we could actually get by at that point in time when things started up was a project that we had here, which was a smaller footprint, a smaller amount of traffic, a smaller amount of everything. So I'm not sure. I understand that people claim that they're always in favor of affordable housing until such time as it comes that we actually have to figure out how to accomplish it. It was all transparent. It was all open. There had been previous FinCom committees that received information. Nothing's been hidden. It was not the choice of Walter. It was not the choice of us to have a TIF. The town assessor, it was his choice to want to have the TIF. Now I hear that the townspeople that live near the property, they don't want this now. They want to go back to single-family housing, where everything always changes over to what people would rather see when they can't get something that they have. So I understand everybody's concerns and I hear everybody's options of what they would rather see. But the town has voted in favor of this over and over again. And the specifics can be worked out and we can sit down with Walter and read, you know, we haven't even finalized the ground lease, so we can take options of what you have brought up and put into it. But right now, it's really important that somebody step up between any of you and say you'd like to be in favor of this project. Or when it goes down the tubes, there's not going to be anything for a while because we won't know what to do. You're looking at five, as far as I know from Liz Russ, we're looking at five years plus before we would be able to turn anything around. And by then, you know, who knows what that project would be?
Thank you, Terry. Are there any, we've been at this for quite a while. Are there any additional new comments or yes, Dean?
Okay, so, um, the, the recent allocation of, of tax credits was well above and beyond the, the normal $500,000 per year. It was $750,000 per year. My question is, when was that additional fairly large chunk of money built into your pro forma? I assume back in two, I don't have it in front of me, so I can't, don't know. But I assume back in 2017, 18, 19, when town meeting is voting, there, there, we're allocating money from the CPC, we're allocating $1 million from free cash, that at that point you were presuming half a million dollars? Because that's, that was the legal limit.
Correct.
What, and now it's $750,000 is what you've actually been allocated per year. But our, our, none of that can go to pay for our taxes. So I'm sort of, like, when did that become part of your budgeting? And how does the pro forma not responsive to that in a way that we might benefit and not have to cough up this money?
Yep, so basically is the project, because of the cost to build it, it was around 16 million, I think, when we were looking at it. And as we have seen, construction costs have continued to skyrocket, especially here in the Northeast, particularly Middlesex County. And, you know, we're competing with, people that are working in Concord are competing with working in projects in Boston. And you are paying premium dollar for construction, whether it's actual labor, materials. And then it's the site cost. This is a project that will have a lot of site costs to be able to, to make work. And when all is said and done, those costs have continued to creep up. So going back to the town for those funds was not an option. So I did have a meeting with the state, explained the situation that was going on. They asked what I had done with the town and explained everything that the town had done to the project. And they were really overwhelmed with the generosity that the town has given. And, you know, they wanted to make sure that they could show their appreciation to the town by also making sure that they stepped up and put in necessary funds to make the project work. So they did that.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any additional comments or questions from the board or the committee? I don't see any. We have two, we have a few questions here. So the first one is from Carlin Reed. So Chris, if you could turn Carlin's video and sound on for us. And Carlin, when you come on, would you please identify yourself for the record?
Carlin?
Here's to.
There you are.
Aha, now let's start the video. Okay, and there we go. Now we're in the right spot. Hi, Carlin Reed, 83 Wits, and I am a member of the PEG Access Advisory Committee, but I'm speaking on my own personal behalf. A lot has been said tonight. I will be brief. I, I appreciate, Mike, you putting up the amendment that I'm giving you folks a heads up. I intend to offer at town meeting. It is now posted on the, on the website under Article 16. Article 16 TIF Amendment is a draft. It's pretty much near finalization. I need to talk to Carmen about it. The reasons for this 10-year term limit for a TIF, if a TIF is approved, and that's an if, based on today's comments, have already been stated. I gathered from this meeting, as well as other meetings, a sense of discontent with the TIF of this magnitude. So I'm offering this as a possible compromise of sorts for those who want to pass the article but don't feel comfortable with the full 15 years as it stands. What you do is up to you, of course. But I have two new points that have not been mentioned tonight. First, and they both start with the letter F, by the way. First one is the finish line. I've heard that phrase. We are not close to a finish line. We still have to have a ground lease drafted. I understand the current draft is for 85 years and the terms of that ground lease have not yet been finalized. We still have to deal with the open space issue that's part of this program. I think in the development agreement, there is room for a group home that should be discussed. And most importantly, it is what Mr. Banfield brought out, the compliance issue. Who's going to be monitoring the compliance of this project? And what type of, what type of terms should govern the annual reports to the town and the compliance consequences as well? Okay, that's the first F. The second F is full staffing. This is some new data. In doing my research on this article and on the Grantham Group, I saw that in Concord, as we know, Grantham has promised to support 30 full-time employment positions. But in their Marlboro and their Belcher Town units, they, they contracted and agreed to support 40 full-time employment units. So why does Concord just deserve 30 full staffers instead of the 40 that the others in unit are getting? That is a question that I have for, for the Grantham Group, and I appreciate if there's a response on that. Finally, I find the phrase financially feasible, lots of Fs in this, to be confusing and squishy. It's more like how much profit you want. Anyway, thank you very much. That's my comment.
Do you want to address the 40 versus 30 employment number?
Yep, sure. So all of our projects are, in the staffing that's determined is based on the care that the residents receive and also the design of the building. And for this project, it will be a minimum of 30. I do have every expectation that we'll have more than 30, 30 staff members on site. But for this project and this TIF, it would be 30.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next, the next comment, so thank you, Carlin. Next is Ned Perry. So if you would turn Mr. Perry's audio on. And Mr. Perry, when you come on, would you please for the record, turn on fire cell? I heard a little bing, but I'll see Mr. Perry.
He's on.
Are you on, Mr. Perry?
It's actually Cynthia Wood.
Cynthia, I'm sorry, your, your screen said.
I know, I'm using Ned's computer.
Now Cynthia, please identify yourself and go ahead.
Cynthia Wood, 362 Bedford Street. I have two comments to make. My first is, speaking as a longtime citizen of Concord and also as a former finance committee member, I think that it's very bad precedent for the town to get into the habit of granting corporate tax relief. And I think it's even worse for Concord to take advantage of a program designed to assist economically disadvantaged areas. That's my first point. My second one is, do we need more assisted living options in Concord? And even if we do, Concord residents get a benefit for only a short time. So few will, so it's possible that few will benefit. I think we should be using our affordable housing dollars and tax dollars to promote a more diverse Concord. This project seems to be the least we can do to buy us out of a 40B project. And I think that letting our housing options be dictated by fear of 40B just gets us farther and farther away from living in the kind of Concord that we want to live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Next, I see a sentence by Christine Purple. Ms. Purple, I don't know if you want to make a comment or you were just. So if you, we'll, we'll turn on her audio and video and find out.
Hi, it's Assessor Lane Partridge. I'm using Christine's computer as well. Sorry about that.
Really tricky tonight.
Yeah, tricky tonight. So.
Please turn on fire cell.
Yeah, so just a couple of comments that the, the TIF agreement or the TIF program is the only legal way that we can give tax relief for this project. The pilot, there's no such thing as a pilot in state law to, for this type of project. So the only way we could go was the TIF. So that was the, the one comment I wanted to clarify that, you know, it's, it's, it's how we can do it to, to make any difference here.
Thank you very much, Lane. Appreciate it. Next, Mr. Bader, Stephen Bader. It looks like you have a question, so we'll turn on your audio and visual and then we have one more after Mr. Bader. I hope Mr. Bader is actually Mr. Bader.
He's on. There you go.
Yes, Stefan Bader. I am representing myself, 7 River Street.
Thank God. Are you right dressed, Mr. Bader?
7 River Street.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
You're welcome. I have two questions, if I might be indulged. The, the first one is the, why is the operating budget from the new One Stop not on the town website? The, the town website currently has the document number 85638, only has the first 11 pages of what should be a 33-page One Stop. And how can we assess the reasonableness of the TIF request if we don't see the operating budget for the next 20 years? Because that's what the TIF relates to.
I don't have an answer for that. We, I, we're giving all of the performers and I forwarded them to the town to be posted on this set of material for, for this Warren article. Chris, I don't know if you're, I know you're there. Did you have a second point? So while we look at, try to figure this out.
Sure. The second point is that the, the latest version of the One Stop, and Walter can correct me if I'm wrong, is dated February 2020, which is obviously before the current pandemic situation. So the question is if there are any increased construction costs related to the pandemic, either because of building code changes or government mandates or just plain best practices for these types of assisted living, senior congregate housing situations, will the Grantham company or the tax credit investors or people other than the town of Concord absorb those costs? Will Grantham come back and be asking us for more assistance six years, two years from now because saying, oh, well, we didn't know, we couldn't put 15 people on one floor and we need more staff or whatever?
Sure. Very good question, Stephen. And no, the Grantham would not be coming back to the town for any financial resource whatsoever.
Okay, and the February, February 2020 One Stop, does, does the version filed with the state have the full 33 pages and the 20-year projections?
Yeah, it does. Yeah, it does, and it's also, yep.
So that should be on the town website so that we can assess whether and to what.
Send log. If it's not there, Stefan will get it up.
Yeah, it's, it's not there as of right now.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Dori Keoh. Dori, when you come on, please identify yourself for the record.
Okay, good evening. Do you have me, hearing me now?
We hear you, but we don't see you.
Start the video. Yep, there we go. Okay, here we go. Thank you very much. Thanks for taking my question. I am.
Identify yourself, Dori.
I'm sorry, I beg your pardon. Dori Keoh, 51 MacArthur Road in Concord. And first of all, I would like to respond to Mr. Cuchera's comment that this would be a blemish on the town. There are those of us in town who care about affordable housing. I've given up, resigned my position as Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee of the League of Women Voters so that I could speak to this in the event that I would be saying something that might be in contravention to what the league may decide to, to, to recommend. I very much believe in affordable housing. I've spent much time bringing this about. So I hope, Mr. Cuchera, you're not going to think that this is a blemish on the town. It's more that we're looking at a business deal, if you will, and have some questions and comments about it. One issue that's helped, hampered all of us in making click meetings until they were instructed by the Select Board in December of 2019 to do so. This may have been inadvertent. It was not a law because it is not a town committee, but it was the understood way that it would be being behaved so that many of people in the town were not aware of what was going on because they simply were not made aware of it. The other comment is to, a question for you, Mr. Ohanian. As I now have gone through the minutes of those meetings between 2000, whatever, 14 and 2019, I did note that you did commit to the idea that Grantham would be willing to pay $35,000 for ground rent and $40,000 for taxes. Would you explain to me where you got the figure of $40,000?
Sure, it's, it's based on the history of the taxes from our other communities when, when we come up with it.
So I would expect then that the taxes are all somewhere in that area, although your, 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 your facilities have a great variety in the number of spaces in them, the number of rooms. Is that right?
They're, they, they do vary a little bit, correct?
Yeah.
They're all around 80 units.
They're all, I'm sorry?
They're all about 80 units.
Even Attleboro?
Attleboro is 81.
It's, it's, really? And that's interesting. How many units are there in Situate?
So Situate is a new project that is still under construction, that is not assisted living. It is a affordable housing, 62-plus, hopefully opening in January. And that is 30 one-bedroom apartments.
Okay. I, this fall, last fall, spoke with the assessors or the treasurers in the different towns in which you did do business and have facilities. And in doing that research, I discovered that it comes out that the average of what taxes are paid by any type of Christopher Heights were consistently, were considerably different from $40,000 a year. Would you, would you be surprised at that?
Well, I would if, so Dori, if, hold on, give me one second here. Well, I would if, so, Dori, if, give me one second here. So back in March, I presented to the Finance Committee the total real estate tax expenses for the six communities that I managed aggregated to $206,000.
I'm sorry. What, I'm sorry. What averaged to 206?
So the average, so the total taxes paid for six communities was $206,000.
And in Worcester, $170,000?
No.
That was incorrect, given to me incorrectly.
I think we need to be clear here. In Worcester, the number is quite higher, and the paperwork that Mr. Ohanian is referring to is certified as of 2018, and in that, at that time, it was quite a bit lower. But now it is quite a bit higher.
Yeah. So they're all over, but to say that your average was $40,000 was the way that you were presenting it. I'm just through and see, they're all different sizes, different shapes, 12,000, 12,000, 48,000, 60,000, 70,000, 126,000, 51,000, and 170. When I do the math...
Yeah. So I don't have any 12,000 square foot communities, and I don't have any 126,000 square foot communities either.
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the units that, I'm not either. That's right. But the average, you presented this figure in 2016. The CHDC believed you when you said that your average real estate cost was $40,000. Would you still hold that figure?
So in 2016, it was probably less.
And if it were less, then we're still going by 2016 prices for real estate? This is 2020. Is that still a valid figure that the town has agreed to work by and made that four years ago, when you're now saying it was probably less? My concern is this, Mr. Ohanian. People have mentioned tonight that things were not known, that people didn't know these facts and figures. We didn't know what the task force or the Junction Village Task Force was recommended because that was not done in a public session. So a lot...
So the Junction Village Task Force was presented to the Select Board, so that was done in public.
My apologies. My apologies. Don't gang up. My apologies, okay?
That's okay.
But that was at a time when the CHDC was not meeting in public. Their task force must have been, and I appreciate that. But I think there's so many unanswered questions. It's not that people are against affordable housing in this town. It's that they don't think that this may be a project that we want to be working with and to be a partner with. There are too many worries that what will be the next thing that's going to find, that we're going to find out that we didn't know about before, and now we do. Oh dear, now we have to deal with it. So I'm expressing concern, not because this is affordable housing, because I would applaud any kind of affordable housing that will benefit Concord residents. But I don't think that this is going to be the case. So thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. I don't think I see any more questions.
I believe you have a hand up from Terry Rothemel in the hand raising feature.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I don't have a hand raising feature on my... All right. Well, if Chris will turn on Mr. Rothemel, and Mr. Rothemel, when you get turned on here and your audio's up, you would please identify yourself. I don't have the hold up your hand function, indeed.
Somehow, Mr. Rothemel did. So I saw him on the attendees list with his hand up.
Good. All right. Great. Hopefully he'll be here with us for a minute, and it'll actually be him.
How about the just hold your hand function? Do you have that one?
Tom.
He may have dropped. He was promoted and he's not in the meeting.
Oh, that's unfortunate. Okay. Yeah.
I don't see him on the attendee list.
Well, he was at the top with the hand raise feature on the attendee list, and that's why I mentioned him.
All right. Well, I don't see, I don't see any more hands, so let's move on to our last article, and that's the BD.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
I'm sorry?
I said, "Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening."
Walter, thank you. Thank you, Michael. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. So we'll move on to the last article. Who, I don't know who's going to be making this presentation. Is it Ms. Hodges or...
It's Kate.
Okay. All right, Ms. Hodges, are you with us? Yes, you are.
Yes, sir.
Welcome back.
Hey, well, I've been here.
Well, I couldn't see you.
Chris, am I allowed, can I share my screen?
Yes, please.
Yeah. Going to add in Ryan Kane.
Uh-oh.
All right, your screen appears to be up.
All right, great. So...
Kate, we're seeing the, oh, yeah, if you can maximize your slide.
Well, it's funny, it is on my screen.
Okay. It's fine.
It's all...
I don't know, Chris. Sorry, guys. You left that.
Big enough.
All right.
That'll do.
If you go to display settings, Kate, it probably will say hide preview.
It says swap presenter. All right, well, I'm sorry. It's mostly me talking, so...
That's what you should do, Kate. Swap the view.
If I can make a suggestion at 10:15 at night, I think this is, this is fine.
Love that suggestion.
Let's plug in a slider.
Okay, there we are. All right. So clearly, all types of industries and businesses have been affected by the COVID pandemic, and recreation in many capacities has arguably been hit the hardest as far as our municipal departments. And so Recreation Director Ryan Kane and BD General Manager Andrew Dutton have been working with me over these past many weeks relative to BD's reopening and ultimately trying to project what the next nine months to one year is going to look like. And so BD's operation is different, as you all know, than Concord's other enterprise or special revenue accounts because unlike electricity and water services, BD has a lot of competitors in the area, and people choose to be part of BD over other facilities in the area, and that's a choice that they make. And so this number tends to fluctuate from year to year and sometimes month to month, even just during a normal cycle. And so the post-COVID appetite for returning to any kind of athletic center is differing greatly from person to person, household to household, and even in and amongst private gyms and other public facilities like the YMCA. So BD closed in March, as you know, to the public, and reopened only in early July. During that time, about 50 employees were furloughed. As of today, 302 households are back, meaning that they're paying their full membership dues, but that's out of 880 at the time of closure, and so it's a little under 35% return rate. So before, we were able to truly evaluate or even begin to opine on the numbers for the fiscal year '21 budget, we needed to understand where we were going at the end of last fiscal year. And so this side shows the major budget drivers, including what the pre-COVID projection is, and that's in the middle column, and then what the new amount is. So I want to make sure that I address the caveat that these are pre-audit numbers, that right now we're going through the audit, and so these are the pre-audit numbers that align with the internal accounting system. But again, the depreciation expense and some of the investment income will fluctuate. And so having closed for the last four months at the end of the fiscal year had a very large impact. Where we were projecting initially a $22,000 net gain, we expect to suffer a loss of approximately $270,000. And that is without taking into effect what we have had to pay for unemployment for the furloughed employees. So we have to address that number and what we've been seeing. And taking those numbers into account, we made several and newer modified assumptions to try to go through the fiscal year '21. So for fiscal year '21, we assumed that normal revenues were going to be down 50% for the first six months, so that would be July through December. And then they were going to grow up, but not entirely back to 100%. So we'd be at 75% revenue for the final six months. And so we made those decreases appropriately. The town, as we talked about before, decreased the amount that is paid into the general fund to zero. That was historically around $90,000 from BD. We have the Compass Cleaning Contract, which we are showing a reduction in cleaning services of about $50,000, not because we're not cleaning, but because we're rolling in a lot of those to some of the staff that we were doing things in pods where people sign up for an hour and a half circuit, and then the building is shut down for a period of 20 minutes to a half an hour and fully cleaned, and the staff do that. So we're able to see a little bit of savings there. In fiscal year '21, so this upcoming, we had hoped to hire a new position that was a membership director, someone that was really proficient in marketing and doing athletic marketing. And while we still truly do need that, we're looking to probably not hire that person until the latter part of this fiscal year. And so we've reduced that amount from $70,000 to $35,000. And if we don't see things trending in the right direction, we may not fill that position at all. We decreased our capital expenses by $45,000 by delaying new exercise bike purchases. We added back a small amount that was in the BD endowment of $20,000 to try to augment some of the issues in the revenue generation that we're having. We reduced $17,000 from group exercise because we do not plan to replace the person who was managing the group exercise, and those functions are going to be absorbed into the role and duty of BD's Assistant General Manager. And then we had a series of smaller reductions in part-time staff hours, swim lesson offerings. The understanding is essentially, you know, we're not open for as many people and we're not open, you know, for an inordinate amount of time, given that we have to close and clean the gym down several times during the week. So we were trying to reduce things that are associated with that accordingly. So, for example, revenues, we decreased by 50%, and so we have a 25% to 30% reduction in the corresponding salaries. So if we're not doing lessons, and we're not doing programs, and we're not paying people to do those. So at the end of, at the end of the fiscal year, you can see that we're looking at a 37.5% decrease, or, you know, about 882,000 that we are trying to shave off of expenses. Here you can see the largest line items updated, which account for approximately 27% decrease in expenditures. So that brings our expenditures, you know, a little under a million, including what I just mentioned about general fund transfers and the decrease in the capital outlay. So with these new members, numbers in play, the fiscal year outlook looks pretty grim for fiscal year '21. We're projecting a, we were projecting a $27,000 net. We're likely facing upwards of a $750,000 loss. So if that was the worst-case scenario, which would come to fruition, BD does have a pretty healthy fund balance, but it, of course, taking that amount of money out, it would decrease our position in that account and bring that to about $2 million. And just in closing, I realize I've not been able to paint the sunniest picture, but I wish to highlight the rec leadership, including Ryan Kane and Andy Dutton, who are both on this call, who have worked much more than 40 and 50 hours a week during the entire pandemic to do everything possible to keep programming and BD going. You know, the negative financial outlook has absolutely no reflection on the professionalism and commitment and drive of our rec director and of our general manager of BD, which is a sign of the times and uncertainty, and it's very, very hard to predict when and if people will be ready to come back to group exercise setting. So we're doing our best, and we're open to suggestions, and I wish I had better news.
Yeah, I think if I could just weigh in, I think, just to build on, and it is, I don't mean to make light of it, it is bad news for the BD Center, and the thought with which it landed here in this hearing, I think, is evidence of that. And I think the troubling thing for all of us is, when's it going to turn around? And so that's the thing, and I guess I agree with Kate. She and her team do a great job of managing it, and they're trying to think of new and different ways to generate additional revenue, but with also complying with the rigorous, you know, guidelines for the state, from the state. So it's a challenging problem, and that's, as you can see now, it's plain why we eliminated the general fund transfers. So it's a tough situation, but we're going to keep at it and see if we can turn it around.
Thank you very much. All right. Questions from the Finance Committee or the Select Board, Mary?
First of all, I want to say thank you very much to both Kate and Stephen and Ryan, and I know the hard work that you're doing, and I really appreciate it. I wonder if the fact that you've decided to delay your marketing manager until things turn around, part of me thinks this might be when you need the marketing manager.
By the way.
You know what I mean? So I'm hoping that you're looking at, and I know you are, just looking at what's happening with the pandemic and get that person on board as quickly as possible. You know, that's a savings that I think, once you hire the right person, they'll more than pay for what you're paying them. So that's my, that's my comment.
Thank you, Mary. Are there, Susan?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to echo what Stephen said and thank Kate and Ryan and all of the folks at the BD Center, because I know you're working really hard. I heard a great review from a neighbor the other day who's back there and says we all ought to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Terry?
My question is simply, what is the number that we are voting at town meeting under Article 23 for this budget?
We're, the number that we're looking for is expenses of somewhere around $2,347,093. The reason being is because we need to be able to have the ability to be able to either spend more if we're taking more in. And so while we have painted a picture here that is not, we're trying to be realistic, and we're trying to hopefully be cautiously optimistic, but the number you'll see that we put forward is, it's adjusted, but it's not adjusted as much as this is because if in fact people three months from now, you know, decide that they're ready to come back, and perhaps some of the restrictions about, you know, how far apart people need to be are helpful for group exercise and getting swimming lessons back on board, we need the ability to be able to pay those staff for the hours that we need them to work. So we do need that flexibility.
So just to be clear, I guess I'm not as interested in the exact number as, you said it's somewhere around the number of, like, are we, do we have a real number now that, and we should vote to take a position on the article? Or is it...
So the expenses are $2,347,093, but I need to submit that to the finance team to make sure that they're on board. So when I say somewhere around there, I mean, give or take $100 and some... give or take $100. And sometimes we don't always round it to the cent. Apparently, only Ryan Kane and I go down to the very penny. So it'll be in that vicinity.
Okay, so it's not that, we still have another month to go till town meeting, and you don't expect a big change between now and then in your estimated expenses?
No. The estimated number that we're giving is the best-case scenario, meaning people are coming back and we're operating at, you know, somewhere in the 80% of what we were doing. The number that I, we talked about tonight is more in the 50%.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Seeing none from the Committee or the Select Board, Stefan Bader is asking a question. At least I think he is. And so if you could turn him on, and I will say, while we are getting Mr. Bader's video and audio that I communicated with Chris, and the entire financial statements for the Junction Village project are in fact on the website and part of the package that was put forward. So is Mr. Bader with us yet?
Yes.
All right.
Stefan Bader, Seven River Street. I just wanted to say thank you to Ryan and Kate and everyone, Stephen, everyone managing through a most difficult time. And I just wanted to add the comment that the next time an auditor or someone else suggests that a fund balance, or reserve balance, or free cash balance is too high and should be reduced, that the standard answer going forward should be COVID-19 pandemic.
I was wondering if anyone was going to bring that up, so.
Your comment, Mr. Bader.
You're welcome.
Are there any additional comments or questions from the Board or the Committee? Stephen, did I see your hand?
Yeah, just real quick, I think, and I know Kate talked about it, but I think just looking ahead, the biggest challenge is by, you know, you can't treat half a pool. You can't, you know, turn on the air or AC in half of the building to be open, but you are limited to having half the people in it at one time. And that's the biggest challenge, and that's where I think we just need to be clear-eyed about. I think the community supports the BD Center in terms of, you know, conceptually, but the community needs to support it by getting memberships and scheduling times to work out, because that's the only way it's going to survive.
Thank you very much.
I see that, I see that Ryan Kane has his hand up in the hand raise feature.
Good thing you're here tonight, Dean. I miss these guys. I missed, turn Mr. Kane on, to hear what he has to say.
Kate, can you hear me, Mike? Yep.
Hi, Ryan. Yes, I can hear you. I can see you. So please identify yourself for the record.
Ryan Kane, Director of Recreation. Just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. One, to recognize the hard work done by the staff to open safely. If you've come by and you've seen it, it is operating in a very safe manner, and there's a lot of hard work that goes into that. And we also, we also appreciate the patrons that are coming out and trusting in us to be operating in that safe manner. Also, a thanks to the town management and the Select Board for, you know, going with that recommendation of the decrease in the general fund transfers. And the last thing was just a comment that was brought up earlier, but it's to recognize the Finance Committee for previous guidance and talking about not spending down the fund balance, and the importance of that fund balance. And like we said, I think moving forward, I think our eyes are much more open to it, but those, the Finance Committee spoke up very much at the last couple of Finance Committee presentations we had that said, "We don't see that making any sense to spend down a fund down, balance." And for the most part, we weren't doing that, but the auditors were making that type of request. So appreciate that, that guidance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan, and thanks for all the work you and your team have done. I greatly appreciate it. Are there any other comments or questions from the Board or?
I'll just note for the record that Mr. Rothemel cop came in, raised his hand, then he was joined as a panelist, raised his hand again, and he seems to have vanished from the, from the list. So.
He's, he's back on.
He's on the bottom right. Give us his name.
Well, get him turned on. Let's hear what Mr. Bader is.
Oh, there he is.
No, that's-
Gary, would you like to, would you like to make a comment?
I, I still don't see him.
I don't either.
And according to my participant list, he's not on the list.
He's not responding.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chris. All right. Are there any other questions or comments from the Board or the Committee? If not, then I'll remind everyone what we are going to do in just a moment. I'm going to ask for a motion for the Finance Committee to adjourn and to reconvene to take positions on more articles. Finance Committee will stay here on this Zoom meeting ID and do the same thing, and we will all reconvene tomorrow night with a Finance Committee public hearing that begins at 7 o'clock. Mr. Tarpe?
Mike, I do see Terry in the lower right-hand corner of my screen now. I don't know whether he can unmute himself or speak, but he is there. And I would-
Well, let's see if we can get him.
He's, he's now responding to requests to activate his video on mute. Yeah, we've tried several times.
My apologies. Okay.
All right. So as I said, the Finance Committee will stay and consider their position on warrant articles, and then Dean will convene the Finance Committee tomorrow evening.
Can I just make a comment? We are, the Finance Committee is in a meeting right now, and I don't think I need to stop that, but we need to close the hearing, and then we can just keep our meeting going. I don't think I need to close our meeting and then reopen it, because we're staying on the same-
Both the Committees need to close the public hearing, and then the Select Board needs to adjourn. So Dean, why don't you close the public hearing from the-
So I need a motion to close the public hearing this evening, and I'm going to ask for that from the Finance Committee.
Move to public hearings.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, I'm going to call the roll. I, Dean Banfield, I vote yes. Ms. Ortner?
You're muted. You're muted, Dean.
Everybody try to unmute now, so we know what's going on. Okay. Mr. Tarpe?
Yes.
Mr. Guarriello?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Hartman?
Yes.
Mr. Hickling?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Jamison?
Yes.
Ms. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Swain?
Yes.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Okay, so the Finance Committee has agreed to close the hearing.
I'm going to enter a motion from the clerk.
Of the Select Board, move to close the public hearing? Second.
All right, would the clerk please call the roll?
Okay. Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. I note it passes unanimously. And now I'd entertain a motion for the Select Board to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
I note that it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We're adjourned, and the Select Board will be leaving. Thank you all very much for your participation.
Thank you.